You have more yeses than they have to be.
I agree with Quintero for meeting there at the minutes to the majority.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully I'm not.
Then I made that rule.
House of Commons.
I was wondering if you're in class before we finished that.
Yes.
Even the secretary stopped.
He said something like this.
He says, "Oh, no."
How we all just do it. The client is basically such a... Incredible.
It's been a day to...
We never heard of this.
It's nice.
When I told him, "It's settled."
He little chick. I don't know, so it's somewhere that he should...
I don't want to say anything, but I don't want to say you don't...
Yeah.
He said, "Jerry." You know, in the end, because of the opposite tonight, uh... For some reason, it's not up to tonight.
Right, however, however.
Well, I don't know. No, no, he's right, he's right. I can tell you, because there's people asking, "Why don't we do that?" I really do. That's what I'm saying.
It's great.
How about something?
You have to wait.
Sports, sports, stands.
You don't have to pay for it, you...
Yes.
Put your...
Why did I give this way?
You know this way. You know this way.
Yeah.
It has a higher proof.
I do, yeah. Did you represent the court?
I love that I know it's pretty tough.
Right. Not sure. Did I hear you? Yeah, definitely.
I remember when I...
Initially, there was second.
I'm sorry, the door's locked again out there, I don't know why. The door's locked!
Perfect, perfect. All being considered, surprise.
Yeah.
The time date and location of this meeting was published in Asbury Park Press. It has been posted on the Vol. 4 in the office of Attorney Lake in these thirty-eight hours. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable confidence that the meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets criteria to open public access.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez is here for a resolution.
Here.
Mr. Quintez, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough.
Here.
Mr. Hertzel.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isakson.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Sable just called me, he's running for his presidency, she'll reassure him.
Thank you.
Hey, swing on professionals.
You sure I prefer test one of the code of conduct, number?
Yes.
The record replied Mr. Vogt, our board planner and engineer is taking the oath.
Okay, good. The harmonization of resolutions.
Uh, without a part resolution, that's what Mr. Gonzalez is here for.
Okay, who are the five members involved in that?
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Stern, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Isakson, Mr. Meyer.
Should we step down?
No, uh... I guess out of an abundance of caution, probably the members who, uh, did not sit on this application because of conflict should probably remove themselves from the dance and go into the back room or, uh... Into the gallery.
Mr. S...
Mr. Stern?
Did you want on the...
No, Mr. Isakson, would you join up into that, just so we...
Right, right. The five members who did not have a conflict have voted on the part, uh, application. You will note that I provided two, uh, resolutions. Um, Mr. Meyer reviewed the first one, which I apologize for, I know there were a lot of typos and such in there, I typed out myself, I wanted to get it read out so everyone can look at the substance. Uh, since it's been corrected, but Mr. Meyer, uh, said that his motion was that the, uh, that the, uh... The approval would be after C, after the last CO. In other words, the improvements had to be completed after the last CO.
For each phase, true.
For each phase, of each phase. So I had originally written resolution version one, is that, you know, you, uh, have to get your improvements, then you get your first CO. Mr. Meyer, uh, asked me to correct it, and I have a version that says that when the phase is completed before the last CO is handed out. And I guess that would imply that before they can move on to the next phase, after that, they would have to have the, uh, designated or, uh... Associated improvements with the roadways completed, is that correct, Mr. Meyer?
Correct.
So, um, you know, he asked me before the meeting, he said, you know, the other ones, not how I made my motion, I said, "Well, that's how I prepared the resolutions the board can adopt," whichever one suits the...
So is E the, the edited one?
Yes, I'm sorry, so you do have two copies in front of you, yes, one is the first one that was prepared, the one marked within E is the one that was edited for Mr. Meyer's comments.
So, Mr. Meyer, uh, we said that that's what your motion was?
Yes.
So, uh, I, so, um, you know, I guess, uh, Mr. Stern, you should ask for a motion to adopt, uh, the resolution E or the first resolution.
Well, I think...
Or have discussion.
No, I think since J.K. made the motion, and it now reflects his intent, I would ask for a motion to adopt version E of SP twenty-three-ten.
So, will you?
Will I have a second?
Second.
Will call Ms. Allen?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Flan... Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Isakson?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas.
Would you please, yes? Seven three, if you're going to...
I think this should be a formal motion. And Mr. Gonzalez, thank you, I know that was, uh, a twelve word, asking for adjustment, you were coming.
Thank you for coming.
Did a great job, thank you.
Thirty hours, thirty hours.
So, the, the next resolution we have on is SP twenty-three forty-four for a receipt to Ahaba Satora. This is a previous approval, the board has carried this resolution a couple of times. Um, the attorney representing the applicant sent me an email today about four fifteen, asking to carry it again for another two weeks.
Quiet.
They're working with the neighbors on...
I can't vote on this evening.
Coming to an agreement on how to get the road approved, if the board orders this applicant to approve.
Can I give a little more insight on that? I've had a lot of discussion on this. If you, if you recall, I cited to the Judge Pressler opinion layout in the case, and the memo that I prepared, it said that the board has jurisdiction only to request... I forget if it was onsite or on track. But the, the long and short of it is that Judge Pressler said that an applicant can only be, um, required by the board to make an improvement outside the middle of the roadway. The other side of the roadway is both off-site and off-track, because I guess the underlying fee to your property goes out to the middle of the roadway, whether it's a public roadway or not. And Judge Pressler in that opinion said, "Well, you really can't make an applicant do the full roadway width." We had a lot of discussion, and I wrote a memo about whether our ordinances had a provision, um, that, um, required a waiver from the board to do a full width roadway improvement, which is a municipal ordinance. And as I understand it, the inner workings of the way the board interacts with the township engineer is the township engineer relies on the board to give a waiver from that provision. If you remember, we had a long discussion about whether waivers required. The applicant, and I think Mr. Smucker, or forcibly, unfortunately, forcefully, um, made the comment, "Well, you know, our ordinance doesn't require, this is a waiver, it's on the waiver." And then the board ultimately reconsidered it, said, "You do have to grant a waiver." And the board did not grant a waiver of the roadway. And the board specifically, after I gave that instruction, said, "Nope, we want the roadway improved to the full width." Now, the difficulty is that I understand from this Morris that the township engineer, Lakewood doesn't have half roadway width improvements. It's just not practical, they either want the full road improved, or they don't want anything done.
Can I add to that, just real quick?
Sure.
I did speak with the engineer to try and get more information on that, he said he hasn't seen it done, but realistically, if only half a road were built, he imagines that his office or the town would keep that closed off until the second half of the roadway is built. Because that half a road would not allow for full traffic movements of either side of the roadway in accordance with township standards. So they would most likely keep that closed until the second half of the road were built.
What?
In this case, that would be probably...
What about putting money in escrow until the proper time to fill, to do the whole road?
Well, I think they agreed to do that, and then the question is, how much should that escrow be?
And that's up to town, man, right?
So, so I had thought about this, and I said, "Well, the board really did not listen to me when I said that you can't make them do the whole roadway." Now, I understand what the dilemma is, and they voted the way they voted. So then I, I thought I told Ms. Weinstein to come back, and I asked the board to readdress it, and I said, "Well, that was the way the vote came down, the gavel slammed, and that, and that was the vote, so who am I to bring it back?" So that, that's why she wants to put it up. And discussing with Mr. Hertzel, um, you know, I... They want to come back and escrow reconsideration, they should do that under, uh, correspondence, and I, I think right now, the board's vote was what it was, and we should adopt the resolution, and they can be, or not, if you want. And if you want to return it for another two weeks, so Ms. Weinstein can address this in person, that would probably be fair, too.
Chuck, through the chair, I was never, I was never given really a clear answer as to what the fair share contribution entails, but the township ordinance, is that township ordinance, is it not township ordinance? Because the fair share contribution makes a lot of sense, I think I said it in the beginning.
Here is how it, my understanding, and this is just from doing closings, you know, being the attorney for a long time, anyway. Most of the time, the municipality or the county or the state will build the road, and they don't ask for any due any property owners to pay for it. A lot of times, when there's a subdivision, of course, the subdivider will build the roadways, that goes with the subdivision, we see that all the time. The town and, and the, and the government has the authority to do an assessment against a property owner for sidewalks, roads, half-width to the middle, et cetera. So in theory, municipality can put a, a road and assess the property owners on either side, that's why when we do a closing, we do a search for assessments. And, but I, I've never seen that actually dumped. Uh, maybe they did it years ago for sidewalks or for roads or towns, when they went from dirt roads, paved roads, but... So as a, as a political matter, I, I think it's rarely you would see a municipality do an assessment against property owners for their share.
Well, it's not, it's not an assessment, in other words, in this case, in this case, the property owner had frontage on four roads, three, uh, three roads are unapproved municipal roadways, and one road is chess street, right? So you have three unapproved municipal roadways, put the onus on one applicant to approve three unapproved municipal roadways, and he is moving us.
That's what Judge Pressler said, and that's why I tried to say we shouldn't do that.
But, but they could, but they could, they could, uh, they would provide a fair share contribution towards the improvement of those roadways, this way when...
Shouldn't road have a be...
Well, when it, when adjacent property owners leave that roadway, they'll have that as a contribution, and we do that at utilities, for...
The problem is that...
That's unfair, Wade.
The problem is that the ordinance for the pro-rata share specifically is off-track, and the half of the roadway adjacent to the property is not off-track. So if you want that roadway, they would have to build or bond or something, the portion against their property.
I think that would be disagreeable to do their...
Uh, Mr. Flansbrough, the problem is the logical disconnect between that, is the planning board has authority only to do improvements that are necessitated by the development. So in theory, if you're saying, "Well, we'll make you do, uh, an escrow for some future need," they don't need it for their approval. So there's no authority to say you have to do this now. So that's, that's, that's the...
And it hardly exists in game, so...
Right, because you, if you're saying, "Well, you don't have to do the improvement now," then that means they don't need it now for safety or for circulation or whatever the reason for it. Related to that application?
So in the context of tonight, the board needs to decide if they're going to adopt the resolution that's been drafted for the previous action, or if they're going to disable it for a future meeting. Let the record reply for Mr. Sable.
Mr. Jackson, I have a question for you. If we table for two weeks, can we change it without having the correspondence coming back?
Well, that, that's another issue, I mean, the neighbors and everybody rely on the board's decision, and then all of a sudden they get a resolution that says something different, there's, that's a problem, too.
So regardless, even when we push it off two weeks, they have to renotice they want to change something and come back to the board?
Yes. And, you know, I think the board always has the inherent authority to correct a mistake or to reconsider something, if it's, uh, you know, the case law, that supports that. So that, that factors in, too, if the board were to adopt Mr. Flansbrough's view now, that says it's not fair to make them pay for the road, that benefits everybody around there, that everybody else around there doesn't have to pay for.
But that's not fair, if we didn't have the reason, is that, is that correct?
I, I don't know, it's fair. But I, I understand your point, and I think you have to look at the integrity of the proceedings and say the public was noticed, they came here, they thought they had a certain result, now all of a sudden it's changed without the public here. I can see where you say you don't want the board to be involved in that, you want it to come back on this.
Do we have a motion on this resolution, or to approve it, or to table for two weeks, one to two?
The only, the only thing I, I would, in fairness to Ms. Weinstein, since she and I had a conversation that she would be able to address the board, I'd really like her to come here, you know, I don't want, since she's not here, I wouldn't want to change that, which is basically what I'm doing. Something about her.
Do you make a motion to move...
You wouldn't want to change the resolution.
Or I mean...
You wouldn't want to change the resolution?
Oh, the, the, the thing, I, I, I don't think the board really should have made them improve the whole width of the road, I don't think that's supported by the case law, I don't think that's fair, but that's what the vote was, so it's not up to me to decide that.
Okay, we have a motion, either way.
I, so...
Why not, or, or...
We, we pass a resolution saying that this is what we did, this was how our, that's all the resolution said, this is what we did.
Yes, yes.
Or we could wait for two weeks, notice, have the neighbors come out, that would be...
Well, then, if she notices and says she wants her leave from that condition, and they have to improve the full roadway width, then we can discuss it. The only thing, like, we discussed it for an hour last time. And that's the way the vote came down.
So we can't change it the vote, from the way it was, it's either we...
Unless it was, uh...
We say...
We made a mistake, we made a vote. It was, it's not legal. I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's why you have appeals, and I don't know what legal, what legalism, I mean, you're probably not two attorneys in this room who would agree on anything that's legal.
Okay, so I think the straightest thing is who just approved this resolution and can come back and correspondence?
That's...
Is that what the board agreed?
They're going to come out and, and change the resolution? Or... It has reconsideration, though.
Reconsideration, you got to do a resolution. So is that what you, like, you feel comfortable?
With notice.
Do we have a motion?
With notice, I agree with notice.
With notice, yeah.
Is that you're the final?
Uh, no. I have Mr. Sable, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Isakson, Mr. Meyer.
Why didn't you vote? We'd like to hear you.
Okay, we have a motion.
I don't know why, I only have four, that must have been wrong. Well, I'm sorry, so that, that's only four people, so there must have been more.
You're just around there.
I don't, this was like so many months ago. I don't have it in this folder because it was before in the year, so I'm not sure.
So one of those four, anyone make a motion?
I'll vote.
To approve the resolution, or to... Okay, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Mr. Meyer, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't able to.
Okay.
Okay, not voting, as per justice.
Thank you.
Number three.
Number three is SP twenty-three fifty-eight, for screws care, I'll see.
A motion? Who do you recommend?
I'm sorry. All for the next applications, Mr. Stern can vote, Mr. Sable, Mr. Flansbrough, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Isakson, Mr. Meyer, you can't vote on this, but you can on the next one.
So, move to second, all in favor, aye?
SP twenty-three forty, out of the state's office, program renewal.
So...
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
SP twenty-three fifty-six, twelve fifteen, Paco, I'll see.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
SP twenty-four twenty-seven, minor subdivision.
Move.
Move to second, all in favor, aye?
This last one, the board hasn't seen recently, we received a request to vacate this previous approval, there's actually a new site plan approval on this property, um, just to tie up loose ends for that site plan, they need to vacate the subdivision that was never perfected and finalized, and the justice office prepared the resolution to vacate that previous approval.
So that would be the same thing, only we had done just now, vacate the previous resolution request for another one?
Someone, this is a completely different project, not a change to a previous condition, so it's different. Uh, the board engineer during resolution compliance says that it be vacated just to tie up loose ends, I guess.
Move to second, all in favor, aye? Okay. Okay, number four.
Number four.
Resolution.
This is a resolution from the committee that the board discussed last time, it is to, um, change the seed of redevelopment area to exclude that lot on the corner of mine and Cedar Bridge, and to, at the same time, rezone it to the R seven-five zone. Um, the board had asked two weeks ago that this be carried for another two weeks, so they're going to have time to consider it.
Does anybody have any questions on that, uh?
I was there for the last...
Mike, Mike.
Quick synopsis.
Mike.
I just get a quick synopsis of this, um...
Mr. Jackson, you're in for this last time, I believe.
I see you're...
Quick synopsis, synopsis, we're on your job. What, what this, uh...
This was T and M made the recommendation to rezone parcel of property that was, uh, it was block nine thirty-one on mine and Cedar Bridge, to make it compatible with the zone across the street, because the, the zone that it's in, it's separated by wetlands, and the, the lot itself is too small, there's also a township parcel that's included in there. And, and T and M felt that the, the zoning that was applicable really did not work, and that it would be better to have it zone compatible with the zone across the street.
Just one thing, Chuck, I could...
Can you just expand on that?
No, I, I just wanted to add that the whole genesis of this was that the property owner, you made the request to the township to consider rezoning, and that's why T and M did their study.
Yes, and the committee obviously thought it was appropriate, do we have the long block there, I could probably show it better than that.
Oh, I'm bringing up the zone, but...
We have a picture right here.
Board had asked for that last time.
John, is, is a picture...
Okay, okay, it's on the second.
Do you have it on, it's on the last page?
John, before we get there, was it a personal question of why a change of zoning was being brought to the planning board?
Well, yeah, because whenever they want to change the zone, they adopt an ordinance, it's, they have to, uh, present it to the planning board to determine whether it's consistent with the master plan.
It's a, it's a misnomer, that's, that's unfortunate, the zoning board doesn't clear zone changes, the zoning board hears applications that fall into jurisdiction under the zoning board.
Just to, uh, just to give a little bit of context, the planning board adopts the master plan, and the master plan is like the, you know, the, the, the underlying philosophy of what the zoning should be, according to best plan review, that the board does. It's up to the governing body to adopt the zoning ordinances. So if, if, if somebody is in a particular zone and wants to have a use that is not permitted in that zone, then they go to the board of adjustment for what's called a use variance.
Well, that's typically tied to a developing concept.
That's for a specific, that's for a specific parcel, so in this case, the governing body is on...
For a concept, somebody has an actual plan for that property.
Right.
Not just to change the zone.
No, they don't change the zone, did I say change the zone, they, they ask for a, a, a change...
Away from that zone.
They allow a non-permitted zone based on a, a concept that they reviewed. There is a site-specific concept that is put in front of them with a request to change from zone A to zone B.
But this is like a higher level, we're changing the whole zone.
You're not granting relief for a particular piece of property, you're actually changing...
So the zoning board grants relief from pre-existing ordinance, this is changing...
Yes.
Based on a concept.
This is zoning board...
For zoning board, you have a use variance if it's not a permitted use. Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes that, no, you, you were talking about changing the use, there, they allow a different use based on a concept if they feel the concept is, is merited for that zone, and for that property.
Mr. Stern, if you look on the, on the map over here, the question is on block nine thirty-one, on the left side, you have R seven-five, on the top here, R forty, so they want it to be contiguous to R seven-five.
It's currently a DN one zone, it's a nice bit of small piece, it's not even big enough to build anything in accordance with the zone that it's in right now.
Right.
So from what I understand, T and M is recommending that we put it to the R seven-five zone, which is the zone that is right across the street from it, it's supposed to lead into the zone...
Why is everybody pushing this?
I think that's an important point, Justin, the other thing that came up at the last discussion, if I could, I think someone said, "Well, there's also R forty." That's true, there's R forty across the street, however, this is a one point nine acre property, you could only get one or two houses if you were to have the R forty zone.
Mr. Jim, why is this in front of this board? This is a zoning, we just spoke...
No, it's not a zoning, okay. Can I, can I just back up for what's happened, a lot of chat? Detention, detention committees recommending rezoning, it always goes to the planning board, for the planning board's input as to whether or not it's, it's in conformance with the master plan currently in place, it does not go to the zoning board, it goes to the planning board, that's where it goes, so it's at the proper board, so...
This is not, why is, why is...
This is not a zoning, this is not a zoning.
Why is this...
This is not with...
Hold on a second.
We'll talk at the same time.
Oh, shit.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Nice to learn, no? No, that's all right, I just, I just, I just don't know, why is the, why, why is the township committee asking us, why is the...
I, I, I think I could hopefully answer.
Okay.
The owner of the property made a request to township committee, which they are authorized to do, to say that they felt that this is not the proper zoning, they felt the proper zoning was R five.
R seven.
R seven, excuse me. The committee could have said yes, could have said no, they had their planner do an assessment and see if they agree or disagree. T and M was hired by the committee, they did the study, they agreed that the request to rezoning, from a planning perspective, makes sense. Township committee has the rezoning request. As part of this process, they come back to the planning board, assembling for input and recommendation back to committee. Committee will make the final decision, yes or no.
Can I, can I go up to Mr. Isakson?
Please.
This is the zone, this, this is the DN one.
This parcel is the DN one.
Our street is R seven-five.
T and M says their...
Are you laughing? I see every attorney is laughing, and what this board and the board attorney is trying to do, just to put it for the record, every attorney over here, that are sitting over here, in the public, is just holding their mouth.
...based on a specific plan, and you say, "I get a variance to allow you to be permitted in that zone." This is different, this is changing the zoning, the only, uh, body that can change the zone is governing body, and...
We build the input of the...
They do, they write an input from the planning board, the planning board, like, writes the constitution of the zoning, which is the master plan, I'll call it, the overall, the big picture.
Understood.
See, it's just consistent with the overall...
I just, I just thought it was a little...
This is what justice force is missing during the master plan.
Okay. Okay, I think we're... How many houses in total can they build, this is on R seven-five, how many houses will go with any ability? That is less than two, I think two.
You're talking about approximately between five and six and eight, or I'm, I'm estimating...
About ten.
That you could probably build approximately ten, maybe a little, a little more.
Can, if we make a, make, first of all, compromise, not making R seven-five, do somewhere in between, ten or twelve, or whatever you want, your question, whatever you want.
The only question before this board is, do you think this is consistent with the master plan? The only question before this board is, do you think this is consistent with the master plan or not? And you also have the option to give a rec, say no with the following recommendation or yes with the following recommendation.
If we make it, if we approve it, can we make a condition of the road being, uh, finished? But that's gonna be automatic.
Do we not approve it?
We'll prove it, authorizing or recommending a change to R seven-five. Can we make any contingent of finishing the road?
We all, we all have questions.
My question.
Let me answer this. The, the only issue before this board is whether that proposed zoning change is consistent with the master plan that this board adopted, which is all the goals and objectives, appropriate uses and appropriate locations, all, all the things in the master plan that said you're trying to accomplish for the, uh, you know, the overall vision for the whole township. Does it fit within that to slide this over into R seven-five?
Okay. Okay. I want to move in. Okay. Uh, questions?
The only thing I note is, Mr. Mr. Donnelly's report on paragraph seven, the master plan, doesn't tell us a darn thing about whether it's consistent with the master plan. So if Terry has reviewed it and Mr. Donnelly is just, doesn't say anything. But it would be really helpful, Mr. Donnelly said, I have reviewed the two thousand seventeen master plan and this is, the, the tangent of course is consistent for the following reasons.
Okay, so Mr. Stern, if you look on the map over here and you see on the left side, the mine thirty-one, a big section of R seven-five, and that the master plan made, so their, their reasoning is that it's right next to it.
I, I get it, but he doesn't say it and, I don't know.
Well, they, they, they say it indirectly in section ten, the recommendations. In seven, they're making a statement of fact that in the master plan reads and they did not recommend changes in the zoning tract. Now.
Doesn't imply they wanted to keep it this way.
Well, keep in mind that when you're looking at an entire township the size of Cluxey, Lakeview versus dialing in later and looking at a two acre tract, it's not necessarily apples and oranges. Like, the, the way I read this, when I got this few weeks ago, is I look at recommendations and the recommendations are, as John read it in the record that, the prior hearing. They said, uh, in their opinion, and, and this is the authors from T N M, Stan Slachaket and Mark Truski, both places planners, their recommendations are appropriate.
So rest of the points, I see.
For the following reasons.
Okay.
Our last motion, can I approve, recommend this resolution or not? I'll make a motion to go up with that recommendation.
We have. Just a quick question, with our approval, can the township still change it?
Yes, they can.
Yes, there is a consequence if the board does not, then they need a, I think it's four or five votes and change is the number of votes that are required to adopt it. And then they have to give reasons why they are adopting it counter to what the planning board said.
We have a motion and a second to recommend, uh, this code.
Yeah, I don't listen to the public during the.
Township.
Okay, well.
Uh, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Stable.
I'm staying.
Mr. Flanscomb.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Redd.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ritz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now, yeah, are we future resolutions?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, number five. Do there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, the board and the public will note items number seven and eight under public hearing are in italics and are noted they are not to be heard tonight. Um, sufficient notice was not provided to those, for those who have applications.
There's no time for it anyway.
Correct notice will be provided, new notice will be provided, but just for everyone in reference, I do expect both of them to be heard on the second.
What, what, Mr. Jackson, last, would, want to announce the last two, do we carry?
No, they're.
We don't need.
Yeah, right.
Okay, sorry.
But, um, there is another item under public hearing, which is item number six, S P twenty-two ninety for Yeshiva Hamna Satorah. He did receive correspondence from the applicants professionals today. Um, I do have people going forward with public hearing, they're asking the board to make a determination on whether the application was complete. You have a copy of that letter on top of your sack there. Um, Mr. Jackson may be able to answer the question.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with hearing it first, let's get it out of the way. The letters here. The only thing I think is surrendered to the.
I believe Mr. Doyle and Mr. Stanley and Mr. Fetter.
Um, I did bring the plans for that, but I didn't put them out. I don't think we're discussing the substance of the application and need them, they're tucked in the corner over there.
Okay, Terry, do you have anything to add on this?
I don't personally, Chairman.
Okay.
There, there is, um.
Okay. The problem, we have the two attorneys here. Mr. Fetter, Mr. Doyle. Okay.
They both, they, they.
For someone. Okay, Mr. Jackson.
The context of this matter is that there was a, an, an application, uh, where the board.
You use a mic.
There, there was an application, uh, to, uh, build for approval in, in the, in the campus, uh, zone. To call it the campus zone?
Wait a minute.
Planned educational campus. Um, and, and it was brought to the attention of the board that the applicant did not meet one of the criteria required of an applicant, that is, that they did not have an advanced graduate program, basically a master's or a doctorate, one or the other, maybe both. And, uh, the, the applicant was told, well, go get that criteria so that you can move forward, you're, you're qualified. And while, while that was, uh, being considered, Mr. Doyle provided me with research that said essentially that, this is something that they can make the application upon and get the, uh, and meet the criteria later because it's just, you know, the, the, the use is, is not dependent upon the applicant. It just is the ultimate user actually has to have the qualifications. So if they get the qualifications at a later date, it's no different. I use this analogy, Mr. Doyle didn't, but, you know, let's, let's say we approve a, a bar and a restaurant or a hotel with a bar and a restaurant. Before they can operate a bar, they have to go to the committee and get a liquor license. And to catch twenty-two, because you can't get a liquor license until you have a facility so that you can outline where the liquor is stored and they can look at the details of that. So a lot of times we approve things for, um, people who don't necessarily have the licensure or the qualifications that are required. Another example, let's say we approve a medical office. A developer could get that approval and then put doctors in there as tenants. The developer does not have to show a medical license. Um, likewise, if it's a professional office, you don't need an accountant's license or a, a law license or whatever, as long as the people that ultimately use it have those licenses. And that's what Mr. Doyle's argument, uh, was. And he said it's very similar to an outside agency approval. And he pointed out a number of cases where the court says, well, of course you can get an outside agency approval later. And this board has dealt with that on, on many occasions, where you need a D E P approval or, uh, Department, uh, of, uh, the D O T approval or, you know, so, something from the state or an outside, a daycare center needs a daycare license, school needs accreditation or whatever. And, and I found this, uh, Morris County case to support the proposition um, that the board can look at an, an outside type approval and say, no, you're, you're not going to get it, you're not close enough. And, and that is a case where the, the, the court said, well, it's in the discretion of the board to determine whether you probably are never going to get this approval. Therefore, we're not going to hear your application.
But John, isn't the distinction, they don't even, getting an outside agency approval is a box you gotta check. But the applicant has standing to make the application here is a standing issue. Okay, we'll explain to be one more, but it's also, they don't even, they can't even get into the gate to make the application until they satisfy this requirement.
Well, that, that's the, that's the issue. It says the use, the user has to have this, it doesn't say that the applicant has to, or the landlord would be owner of the land. It says whoever goes there and operates, uh, as a, as a accredited institution has to have that, so they can get it later, they say.
You think they built the whole thing and just wait for a school to show up?
Wait for an accredited.
You can't get a C O until you have an accredited user.
Can't do it even if you're.
Well, that, that's what his argument is and, and I understand what you're saying too, which is why we, uh, you know, discuss it.
Is there, is there a tithes issue?
Right, so I don't know if you want to try and take this.
We're gonna, we're gonna deal with a few, a few of the items. I'll, I'll let John, uh, go over the, the course of, of the, of the cases. But I just wanted to clarify, John indicated, we came before the board and the board said, you know what, you don't have it. The, we disagree with that, with that, that premise, that premise when we came originally and we said, we're gonna carry it so we could go back and forth and, and discuss this. Um, supposed to argue here with that, well, it's not in front of us. Our position always has been that we are, you know, we are accredited, uh, higher education. We do have the right to, first of all, if we were nobody, right, if we don't have a state license, then maybe you could argue that we're not even, then we can't get into the box. Our, we have it, it's just another one that we get, another program that we can offer that we now have availability to, that we've applied for everything and it's pending, well, so we've done all that stuff. But as far as we need to be, being able to proceed with our application, we've met all the criteria.
Have you or don't you have the credentials today? March third, yes or no? Yes or no?
Which credential?
Credential for the higher education with.
We're not, we're.
Masters to be whatever.
We are a higher education.
I'm asking.
I'm answering the question.
Okay.
And has applied for the graduate degree status.
But can I ask a question again?
Yeah.
Do you, on March third, two thousand and twenty, have a masters to be, this applicant have or does not have? Credentials.
We have applied for and we're waiting for response.
Ask the question or not answer it? It's okay if we get the answer, the answer is no.
No, we can just.
It's pending.
Okay.
One other time, questions if needed. Okay.
Let it go.
Let me, let me start off, that is an earlier question to answer. And John pointed out when he asked me, it's called what? It's a planned educational campus. When the township committee, we had a lesson about the township committee and they send things to the planning board, then it comes back. Township committee said that this would be a planned development. A planned development is something different under the state law than a zoning ordinance. It is a prescription that on larger tracts, whether it's an industrial campus, an educational campus, those are treated differently under section forty-five and sixty-five of the municipal land use law. Both of those sections were cited in the ordinance that said planned educational campuses. Now, the state law mandates that any application for a planned campus such as this must go to the planning board. So we are properly before the planning board. Case law further says that if there's a difference between the, uh, overall ordinance and what the applicant is seeking to do, they can apply, but only to the planning board for what they don't call it a waiver, but from a difference between the ordinance and the application. And we're not opposing that. So they further say, you can't on a planned campus go to the zoning board. So we are before the only board by law that we can be for under the township ordinance, which governs both the planning board and the applicant. So the question becomes, well, if we have to be here, is it not an issue? And I think that's the question, that you don't have the second degree. And the answer to that is.
What, what, what is about planned campus, what does that define, what does that mean? Before we go into more of that.
Um, I can read it out of the.
Just give us a couple of points.
It's, Lakeview Township has made it determined that higher education was an important aspect of Lakeview and that there should be planned campuses that, because they have found, as stated in the backfiling of your ordinance, that having a compassionate group where the residential component, the residential component, the edu-, the recreational component should all be in one area. And they set forth minimums of acreage, distances, setbacks, parking, unit count, density, all of which we meet. So we are properly before the only board that can hear our application.
You meet all these, including the credentials? Is there anything in the plan, the, the township ordinance that re- reference a credentials for a planned campus? So yes or no?
There's a lot of standards and we meet those.
Talking about credentials, not about buffer, not about.
It says it must be an accredited institution of higher education able to grant undergraduate and graduate degrees. And so.
What is higher education?
Higher education is defined as more than a bachelor.
More than?
A bachelor, a bachelor's degree.
So you need to give a masters, right after bachelors is masters?
They, you need to have that in order to be approved, but in order to apply, we're before the only board we can be before.
I mean, clarify what you said, in order to apply, anybody can apply it, correct?
No, not anybody.
I mean, have the acreage, you'd have the acreage and do whatever.
You have to have the acreage, you have to have the engineering plan, you have to show the residential, you have to show the recreational, you have to show all of those elements, all of those.
Apply, yes, but not what?
But you.
You can apply for the approval, but what can you not?
What we can't not build.
Build until you have it.
Or what you can't not do for us is to allow us to be approved and comply with. Think of first stages, there's an approval, subject to conditions, like with every other application. We have to meet those conditions. The engineer provides that there is compliance. Second stage, he issues a letter, it complies. And then the third step is to do the actual building and get a C O, which doesn't get issued unless you have fully complied. So when you put all of that together.
And it doesn't have to be, not, not necessarily this applicant, this, this school. You need, the end user has to be an accredited school.
That's correct. And, and, and this particular applicant, to be sure, has received approvals from the State Department of Education and the American Jewish Institute of Study, which is accredited.
The masters, because that's what the township ordinance says. So we're not, we're not gonna have a copy of the other ones, a copy of the ordinance.
Yes.
May I see it please, so?
I did, I know Mr. Stern can't see, I apologize for the defamation.
Oh, no way, Alex. There's still waiting for our point of view, you have to.
You'd rather be a question.
The official word, that's the subsequent. When the subsequent word is changed, the first one said, it's a standard equivalent to the second one said, you have to have.
The time is not definite. And Mr., Mr. Doyle, you feel comfortable that you will be getting the masters, the, the ability to give a masters?
Having spoken to the Department of Educational, uh, person who issued the letter that said that we are licensed as a, uh, univer-, excuse me, of higher education and a process that he takes, that generally takes three to six months, a process that we've been through before to get the associate's degree, been through before to get the college degree. Yes, I feel very comfortable based upon that conversation and that history.
Can I, maybe, I think it's, um, please keep confusing me, maybe you should not reference any credentials except for the masters. They don't have the masters, let's just stick to that, and they're coming in to apply even though they don't have it. We're not even saying we have higher and lesser, it's just trying to. But then, then, I understand, there, there are cases basically, they will need it right now for, for time application.
Perfect.
And they cannot build another campus or another seven-five until they.
Let me like.
What, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the board is they want, Mr. Chairman, what, what I'm hearing from the board is they want you to explain why the board can hear this application now when this application, when this applicant does not have this credential.
John's the fresh.
And, and he explained that already.
You don't even get into the, the box.
Well.
So he's saying.
I don't have the access, Chris.
No, it's not the.
Nothing.
No.
They, you're reading an ordinance which must be first read in terms of the state statute. This is a planned use development. Planned use developments can only be before the planning board. If you were to take the judgment or the determination that you don't meet it so you're not right until you get approved by whatever state agency is going to approve it, then we have nowhere to go. Now, you might say, we have, we could get all of that in advance.
It's still.
But there's any number, for instance, recently in December, this board adopted or used the daycare center approval mechanism within the ordinance that says there are permitted use. mechanism within the ordinance that says there are permitted use. So, daycare use application came to this board, and it was approved. One of the provisions in the ordinance is that they be a licensed daycare user. They weren't at the time of the application. You approved that application, subject to then getting the same kind of state license to do a state regulated business that we are. That is appropriate there, it is appropriate.
But, technically.
Mr. Stur. Mr. Stur has a question.
Yeah.
Did you remember that application, that we approved it on condition of getting approval? I don't remember, that wasn't.
Even Mr. Stur, any, I can build a daycare center, even though I don't have an end user, and then the only, only a licensed end user can.
So, what's the question now? The question is they can apply, apply at all? Is it different than daycare?
They would like to be, they would like to be, like, subjects that are paying the accreditation.
Correct.
No, 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 no. There's a trick.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
That's all you're asking.
And, and, correct, and I think that's, that's what we should do. And, John, you, you object that, you think that's not, that they cannot legally do that?
They wanna get duplexes samples.
May I just collect myself here a second?
Yes.
What my, there, there are two veins or two lines of cases. The one line of case is actually pretty short, it's Morris County Fair Housing Council versus Pluton Township. And in that case, Judge Skilman, on the superior court level, trial court level, ruled that since the board was dissatisfied and not confident that the applicant could meet the D E P criteria for moving a dam or something like that, that the board had the authority to reject the application because their outside agency approval seemed tenuous and speculative. And in my view, the board has an inherent authority as a man, to manage its own calendar to say, wait a minute, that your, your outside approval is too tenuous, we're not going to take three nights of hearing up and devote our resources to some pie in the sky idea that you're going to get an approval, that it doesn't look like you have any chance of getting. And I think the Morris County case supports that proposition. Um, and, and I think you could do it under the authority of that case, that case has not been reversed, it's an older case, it's from, uh, two thousand, it's not that old, it's from two thousand and fourteen. There have been several cases since then where they've limited the holding in that case and said, well, not so fast. If the applicant thinks they can get an outside agency approval, it is directly authorized in the municipal land use law to go out and get an outside agency approval, it's right in the M L U L, that you get D E P later, you get D O T later, et cetera, et cetera. The uniqueness thing about this case, I think, is that this is not an outside agency approval, although Mr. Doyle would say it is. He says it's from the state higher department of education or something along those lines that issues this credential. I don't know if it is or it isn't for this particular type of study, but, um, so, it's not exactly an outside agency approval. And when I first evaluated this, I said, it's not that easy to go out and get a master's degree or a doctorate degree for a school. I think that's a pretty big deal, I think it takes years. And it's not something anybody can go do, I don't even know how many masters programs there are in the state of New Jersey. My point is, is I don't think it's that easy. So, I, I think it's a discretionary call on the part of the board to say, you know, th- th- this is so tenuous that we're not going to take our time, or say, well, it's really no different than getting an approval for a medical office when you're going to put doctors in there later, or getting an approval for a daycare when you'll get your license later, or getting an approval for a bar when you get your liquor license later, or getting your approval for a subdivision when the county or the D O T is going to give you your road opening permit at a later.
Mr. Jackson, I have a right to build a bar even though I don't have an end user, right now?
Well, I, that's what Mr. Doyle's argument is, he says that it's up to Mr. Herzl after he gets appro-, his approval to go to the township. And, and with a bar, I think that's an interesting example, because my understanding, having done them, you cannot get a liquor license until you show the physical layout and they actually get a chance to go and inspect it. So, you're really taking a big risk, uh, that the governing body is going to issue your liquor license, they wanna see how it's locked, they wanna see what cellar is stored in, they wanna see where the doors are, they wanna, they, you have to have a physical location before you get a license. So, to me, you're always taking a risk when you go to work. That's kind of what they're doing.
And he, he, thank you, John, for clarifying, and based on whatever John just said, I, I think, we, we do have a third type of schedule, and they don't have any, any timeframe, and we don't, we, we don't usually deal with just the foundation of education to deal with. D E P would deal with it on a day basis, D O T would deal, would deal often, we really waste a lot of time on this. Maybe, um, based on that Morris County case that has not been appealed, let's put it off and let's, and let's see what happens. Bas-, based on that case.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to that case, seeing the importance, we'll skip into it, but.
And, and, Mr. Chair, can I just interrupt, Mr., not interrupt, but can, can just finish with, with one more. When, when we look at cases, we look at how persuasive they were. First of all, that's a law division case, so, in my opinion, that is not binding precedent. I think it's authority for the approach that Mr. Stables suggesting and the, uh, approach I originally suggested. I will say, however, there are a number of cases afterwards that gave negative treatment to that case. And, you know, you look at, uh, Dal Associates versus Harmony Land Use Law, that was, uh, not reported, um, that, that, it was distinguished by a case that I handled, Darumpel versus Lakewood Township Planning Board, where that was based on a outside agency approval. And then United, uh, Return to Water versus Furo Hillside, that was most negative, and I believe that was a, yeah, it was the, all three of these cases would be appellate division, where they kind of distinguished it and did not really go in the direction of that case. They distinguished it, said, well, that's a narrow holding because, you know, that was a dam and that's kind of an exotic thing, I'm paraphrasing. So, I, I, I think if you look at it from a scholarly approach, the, the, the preponderance of the law, the direction of the law, the higher courts have held the Morris County case on a very short leash.
Meaning they've got it strong?
No, they, no, they, they never reversed it, which is significant, but they, they constrained it, it's holding.
First, to be more than standing, for, um, for John, I just wanna add in there, so, case law is.
Mike, Mike.
Case law is very fact specific. Each case is, 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 is its own facts, so to take it and then apply it to the next case. What John's saying is that, yes, this is a case from two thousand and fourteen, for this case, there were other cases that distinguished it and said, however, it is different based upon A, B, C, and D. And for those cases, they said, that, that wasn't there, the dam, E P, that's different. You were told, again, it's a state license, so, again, John, you.
Mr. Stern, Mr. F-, one second, Mr. Fetham. So, I get the point about the case law being limited to the facts, but we have, Brian, which is kind enough to hand me version one of the ordinance, which you clearly would fall within today, and then we have version two of the ordinance, which tightened it up, that you don't comply, let me finish. So, we have the governing body, the legislative intent is saying scrutinize these things strictly. If the township committee wanted us to have it loosey goosey, they would have left it this way. The fact that they went out and tightened it up.
They want the end user.
We should be waiting for the chairman.
Not the applicant.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
Let's get a bid for the chairman.
If he's listening, uh, it's, John, there, there have been several points that have been made, and, and I, I wanna just take them one by one. With respect to the Morris Township case, it is, as John mentioned, after he mentioned the case, law division case, meaning it's happened in the higher courts, limited authority, uh, been disagreed with, maybe not much, but remember what that case said. Most significant be the Assistant Township Enchief testified that there were existing uncertainties concerning the required repairs and modifications of the reservoir dam, and his office could not approve the stormwater plant. So, there was an inherent engineering issue right in the planning board's jurisdiction about the drainage plant. That's why they said in that court case that the board was right in not determining it, because a basic element of the board's consideration wasn't known. It is not respectfully the board's expertise on higher education licensure. It is on stormwater management, it is on engineering issues, but you don't ask a person, and it isn't within your jurisdiction, to determine, oh, what courses are being owned? How good are your professors?
Therefore, the ordinance, the ordinance says.
Now, now, the ordinance says it's a planned campus. Section forty-five says planned developments may only be heard by the planning board. The boards say that, excuse me, the state law says, when a board is given specific jurisdiction, no other board may exercise that jurisdiction.
John, you keep, so, keep going in there, but I, I understand what you're asking. Well, it is so, you can't, but, but if you're not an accredited applicant, you can't come in front of the board, it's not like.
The daycare can't be accredited either.
Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't think that this is appropriate to continue. There's other applications here that were scheduled before this, this applicant pushed themselves onto this agenda and promised they would go last and be heard only if they were reached, and this has not been a quick discussion. I think the other applications.
If I, if I may just, it, it's, if I may sum this up, I, to compare this to a daycare center is ludicrous. The daycare center can be used as a daycare center. That's it, that's, one second, one second, it can be used as a daycare center. The worst of the worst, you wanna make it into a regular school, you can raise the toilets up from a high, lower level to higher level. And he's a, there's, there's a very, very finite amount of uses. Here you're talking about developing a campus with a hundred and twenty-eight, how, what's, let's say they don't, let's say you guys develop it and they don't get the accredited status. Then what? Then you're back in front of this board asking if we can now make this regular development, and people, like, what was it, Pine River? When it was supposed to be a senior development and ended up being a regular development. Let's let them get accredited, and let's let them come in front of the board and let them apply as the applicant should in front of the only board that they can present to.
And even if we, uh, dis-, not approve this, not, not this application, they can go in front of the court, or the judge, and then reverse it. And, and with all the cases. I think, I think.
As a, as a, as a, you also have the option of, I mean, then do, then be heard, for example. But not, you can't do anything until you have accreditation, you can't, you can't clear it.
Then they will be able to build duplexes.
Yeah, that's putting a car in front of a horse.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I won't give this lawyer a question.
I would say the law requires you to put the court before the horse and give you that ability, and I will quote from an appellate court case, courts favor the grant of preliminary approval of development applications conditioned upon the applicant securing necessary approvals. That, they favor that. You do that every time you say you've gotta go tactically, you've gotta go to this state.
Can I see a friendly question, John, say? We have to, we have to conclude it. How long do you need? Have you applied? Have you applied? The timer's short, have you applied?
For the.
The masters degree?
We started the discussions with the.
You have not applied.
We started the discussion.
There's not an application, if there is an application, that is not.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman? I, I, I recommend that, that you take control, because a lot of people, we don't have a stenographer.
Okay, I'm gonna poll the board. What, what, Mr. Stern, what do you feel?
Had you absolutely been applied, and you gave me a timeframe, said we need about four months, I would have been much more open. You haven't even applied, so I would say no.
They haven't even discussed whether to follow the board.
Okay, Mr. Stur.
I agree with Mr. Stern.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Subject to an accreditation, but it's not, you know.
Uh, I.
Have your own risk.
I agree with Mr. Flansbrough.
It wasn't fun. I, I agree with Mr. Stern and Mr. Stur.
Okay.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Flansbrough and Mr. Herzl.
And Mr. Raisik?
I wanna hear more.
No.
It's hard to determine based on what we just have, I mean, there's, there's a few issues with the definition of planned educational campus. Uh, have they presented a full plan for the area?
They, they have a full plan, I, I don't listen to it right now.
Well, I'm saying, this is part of it to see what they're, what they're planning, that's, that's a part of the issue here. In other words, like you said before, if it ends up not getting the approval, so what's gonna be there?
It's just, if they get approval, it's not a start building, we have to sort of see, plan, find that.
The two choices, what they have.
What should we build it, we should build it so that they don't have accreditation, and then we should sit there empty, what's, what's the point? They can't build it. And then, and then they're gonna.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman? This, this, excuse me, everyone, this is very important, everyone should have the deliberative word. Please just take everyone in order and don't let anyone outside the board interrupt it. Let everybody, after, if he's heard, let him say as many words as he can.
If, if, if you, if you say yes, they have to.
I thought you were saying something, but based on the definition, um, assuming we have to go by this definition, is that correct?
Okay.
So, I mean, assuming this is the state, you know, statute, um, it, it says points in here that it has to create a unified campus setting, the land structures, including dwellings, should be owned and developed by, only by the institution of higher education, not by a partnership with any other arrangement. Based on this definition, we, we might have, we might have an issue, so I, I just need to get clarity, what they have planned in order to be able to vote on that based on that statute that I didn't see this before.
Chairman, with that, um, the letter that was provided to the board members, I apologize, you didn't have that in advance to review, I only got it this afternoon, it does at the end of that letter very clearly state that the applicant intends to make use of another ordinance that provides that once they have been deemed complete for a campus application, they will be developing this for R seven five.
Mr. Chairman, can I please?
The applicant, that is not a secret, the applicant.
It was a secret, they didn't know about it.
That is on the letter in front of you and the letter that is in my file. So, it's not as if they're actually going to build a campus that's going to sit.
Right, so I wouldn't be allowed to do that based on this definition.
Mr. Mr. Raisik, Mr. Herzl, that, I started to say earlier, there's more to this.
The, 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 the only question is, are we letting them come back to show, uh, an R seven five application and convince the board that, that that's what's, that's what's directing to do?
No, not necessarily, but they, they do need to show that they are, they can't start, they can't get a C O without applying for that, uh, higher.
They can't build it. They can't build it.
They can't start building until they get that? Okay, that's different, okay, they can start building.
They'll automatically get it.
Are you okay for them to come back and show their plans as an R seven five or not?
You're giving them R seven five now?
But I wanted to be clear what they are presenting.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to see the plans.
And so, I'm gonna ask for a motion, I have, we're polling the board, we have four, who said they, they were allowing them to come back and show plans on R seven five, we're not approving anything tonight, but.
Whoever makes the motion can make the motion, as they wanna make the motion, then they have a vote on it.
Automatically get R seven five.
I would move, one second. I would make a motion, and this application is incomplete.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Stern?
At least that would be yes, yes.
Yes, it's incomplete? Mr. Stur?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
No.
Mr. Herzl?
No.
Mr. R, it's not here, I'm sorry, Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Raisik?
No.
Okay, so, uh, wait.
The motion does not pass.
Okay, do we have a, a motion? Um, and, uh, we'll ask another motion, we can make a motion, and then they can come back and get heard. Come, come back to get heard as R seven five.
However, they wanna present.
They don't have to come back.
Glad to be straightforward, glad they wanna.
However, they wanna present their application.
Okay, do we have a second with a, not, sorry, we have a second, roll call.
Wow.
Sorry, Mr. Mark, a second, give me two seconds.
They just got R seven five, one minute.
The motion is that the application is complete and they can move forward with, with their application or with whatever revisions they are.
We're not approving it, they have to come back and then.
No, they don't have to come back, it's a lie.
Be straight with, what is this?
They don't have to come back here.
It's a lie.
I'm sorry, I need everybody to speak at once, guys, and I need you to disregard the shouting from the public, which I think is incorrect.
And, Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
There was a motion by Mr. Flansbrough.
Right.
I, I think I hear a question about the motion, Mr. Flansbrough should explain, 'cause I think Mr. Stern said, what, what exactly are you moving? What would that allow? If you need explanation for me, I'll do it, but I think Mr. Flansbrough should introduce his motion.
My motion is that they can come back and turn an application before the board.
So, your motion has as a premise, an underlying premise, that they, uh, may do this on a contingent basis, that, that they have their application pending for the accreditation, that you're satisfied that that's enough, that they don't need that right now in order to go forward with their application.
If they would present an application before the board, it would be risky.
Only to present an application, not to build.
Mr. Mr. Flansbrough, would you consider a friendly amendment?
You, you're, you're allowed to make it.
If you don't wanna consider, I won't, I won't make it.
I just wanna, I just wanna move on.
Make the amendment, I can consider.
No, maybe put a sunset provision on this, this can't slip out forever. They, they, they can move forward, but if for some reason, they don't, I don't know.
They can, they wanna.
Again, and, uh, John, John Jackson, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and approval is only, assuming they got approval, assuming they got something, it's only good, it's only good for as long as the M L U L lasts, before they have to come back in four days, like.
Which is a long time, honestly.
Yeah, so there's nothing that we're gonna, we're getting tied to, because that's against the law.
Mr. Stern, can I?
Let, 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 again, my motion is, I'm back.
Okay, so we have a motion, I'll say.
Can I just, can I just, Mr. Stern, what the, what the consequence of that motion is, that Mr. Flansbrough is satisfied as a premise in that motion, that the applicant may make this application, uh, as someone who is not, at this moment, qualified, but who may get that qualification later, he's putting it in the category of someone who's getting an outside agency approval. He's putting it in the category of someone who's getting an outside agency approval to draw it.
They need to get the application approved.
Shh. Okay, so, Mr. Stern, how do you vote?
I, I defer to the wisdom of Mr. Flansbrough. I vote yes.
You vote yes? Okay. Mr. Sable? I might have to go. Ally, you, you do the roll.
I have a motion.
I have a fair second.
Yes, Mr. Isaacson.
Doesn't matter.
Sorry, Mr. Meyer's second.
Doesn't have to go.
Mr. Stern was affirmative. Mr. Sable? To, to clarify, I heard your question. This, this is not an approval of the application. This is an acknowledgement that the application is complete for purposes of the board for future public hearings.
That's it though.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes, stipulating that they do not commence any building in the interim.
The motion has.
Not build pending that they have.
No problem.
The motion has.
He just got the R seven five. No, I just wanna, uh, Mr. Isaacson, um, what, the consequent, the board has within, within its own authority to deem an application complete. That's a threshold matter. That is an interlocutory decision. That does not preclude somebody from objecting on that basis or raising that and from the board changing its mind at a later date. But right now, the board has decided that the application's complete and can go forward. That's all they've done.
They have no approvals.
No approval. They can only go forward.
Okay, let's continue.
Automatically R seven five now.
Tell you what, you're waiting for.
I don't know, should I always listen to you, right?
The application for consideration is SP twenty-four hundred made by Allen public. It's a minor subdivision to create two lots from three. Uh, it might be a component, I believe.
He just made the R seven five.
No, that's.
I know what he did.
Okay, let's go through.
All right, everyone has a copy of our January seventh review. Uh, as indicated, there's no full variances, however, design waivers required from, if early, these surrounding campus streets, Dunmore, Tinfoil Ward, East, Alkins, Noll Road, as well as associated curb sidewalk, uh, as we created.
Carolyn?
Would you?
So this, um, for the board's information, Mr. Meyer's asking where this is. It's out in an area of East Kennedy that's not developed. Um, it looks like it's just past, um, this is called Brook Park. Brook Park. It's just behind Brook Park, on a portion of Kennedy that has not been built yet.
Uh, there's a submission waiver too.
Yeah, I believe the submission waiver was with respect, uh, to making that application. Uh, as indicated, Chairman, we support the waiver with the understanding that they can't get the plans approved without going to town.
Do we have a motion to go along with engineer's accreditation?
Okay.
Second, on favor, uh, hey, went through the design waivers. Hey, anything else?
That's it, Chairman.
Okay. Brian?
I'm sorry, let the record reflect, Mr. Brian has returned. Did Mr. Isaacson step down for this? Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Brian Planery, if we're tell truth, tell truth and nothing but the truth. Uh, licensed professional engineer planner, New Jersey. We have three lots in the woods. We wanna change it to two lots in the woods.
Can you do it in five minutes?
This? I'm done. We have three lots in the woods, and we want, want it to be two lots in the woods.
And there's no variances?
No variances. The waivers, the waivers are improving the roads. And you see the Google Maps that Ally has up. It's in the woods. It's, it's beyond the Brook Road Park.
Sidewalks?
When somebody comes in to build, they can build roads and sidewalks and everything else that's needed. Today, we have three lots in the woods. Tomorrow, we would like to have two lots in the woods.
Okay. Is no surrounding, uh, residential units around it?
It's trees for, uh, the, the closest trees development is, uh, Schuster's.
For wiring and subway.
Uh, there's, there's two applicants that they're splitting up in an unusual lot so that they each have two.
So they have to come back before they build anything?
They, they cannot build anything without coming back, and they can't build anything without roads and curbs and sidewalks that township engineer would require.
Which would be dealt at the later date.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions for board members? Uh, we'll open the republic. Anybody from the public that'd be here, please come forward. Seeing open it.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything to say? Not sure you have anything. No. But come close to the republic. I ask for a motion on this. Mr. Meyer, move. Yes. Second, Mr. Flansbrough, roll call, please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next application is SP twenty-three fifty-nine A A made by Yehuda Lynch. This is located on Lanes Mill Road. They're converting an existing house into.
Uh, as indicated, our January thirty.
Yep.
Okay, please be quiet in the audience. We're not here.
Beginning on page two of the view, uh, we note that there's numerous waivers listed.
Just one, one second, uh.
North.
Okay. Okay. You saw that, it's like, Terry, I'm sorry.
It's office orders. There, there, there's numerous waivers listed, uh, on page two. What I would recommend doing is hearing the application, and then if the board wants approvals, then we can circle back on the waivers.
Okay.
Uh, continuing on to zoning, uh, under variances, accessory side, you are set. That variance is, is required. Uh, there's an existing garage on the property. Uh, comment three, under sound buffer release is necessary. Comment number four, border release necessary for parking in, on the property line. Um, and, uh, there was a partial relief for parking within the property line uh, with regard to an existing undefined gravel and direction.
Okay.
Please first, don't you? Or is it just changing?
Changing it.
Okay. Ryan?
I, I have two exhibits marked. Uh, A one is a copy of the plan.
Do it as fast as possible.
Uh, it should be. It's, it's, it's just as simple. I, I, I heard that there was no north arrow on the plan, so I threw one on. Uh.
Can we take that off the waivers?
The same orientation as the other plan B two. I'm assuming most of the board knows where this is. It's, uh, north of Route eighty-eight, the bowling alley sits at the corner of, on the bottom of the lot. The property behind it is the, uh, uh, Natida Contra River. The bowling alley would be sitting on this corner. Uh, the, behind it, it is the Natida Contra River with the C one buffer. This big lot behind it is old township on the property. It's an existing house, uh, that they wanna convert it to a shul. You can see the existing, uh, area that's available for parking. Uh, it is well more than what's needed. Um, the, I'm trying to see where, where it said the size of the sanctuary.
Six seventy-five, six seventy-six.
Six, six hundred seventy-six feet. It doesn't require any parking, but you can see certainly we have more than ample parking, and, and it's inherently beneficial.
Well. How many, how many?
A, a lot. Uh, we, we, the, num- number, uh, seven on the plan. Uh, but you can see the gravel area in the back, uh, and you, you can see from the, the Google Maps that, uh.
The seven in the front are paid?
Uh, yes, the seven in the front is, it's an asphalt truck.
How many handicap?
We have not shown any handicap, but we go to the building department to get our CO, so we would need to provide a handicap spot.
I think you need seven and you're using seven.
No, we, we need none. We're less than eight hundred. If you have less than eight hundred, you need none.
None.
Zero.
Okay. Okay.
So zero parking required.
Unless with all the waivers that you're requesting.
The waivers are because it's an existing site. We would, we would not come in here and ask for a shul to put the driveway next to the neighbor, but the driveway's already there. The sign is already there. It's a house. We just wanna use the house as a shul rather than as a house.
Any changes you make, let's come back to the board.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
You talked to the neighbor about the changes?
He was noticed. That's true. What?
You should, you should, the, the applicant.
Sir, please raise your identity score from testimony to give you first court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes. Please state your name.
Yehuda Lynch.
Can you do that?
And, uh, uh, Mr. Planery, I think we called placing your in the road. We placed on the road through this application.
All right, what?
By how?
Will we do it again? From, from the.
The recognition.
Yes.
She swore from testimony, you gave before this court, was the truth, the whole truth, and will continue to be the truth, the whole truth.
I do. Ryan Planery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer planner.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, Horizon is down the block. They don't have a shul in that area. Uh, Horizon. They don't want to get well taken down the shul. People from Horizon down in there.
All right.
People from Horizon will down in there. And there's a.
How many people? Okay, now, you understand that any, anything you do to the property, you're gonna have to come back. Just to change use for the existing house. Throw it down, it will literally come back. Right? You'll need more parking. Any questions for any board members?
What is the closest patio? No, meaning that you go on part of the shul. You're increasing the, uh, square footage of the shul.
It's a lower level.
It's not the same. It's huge kitchenette. What, it's a.
They're trying very much to behave, but it's.
Is it opening now? This is kinda, this is actually.
I detect distinct progress.
The house was built for a shul, one G B A.
No, it was built for.
With such a big sanctuary space, it's good to put this.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
By, by that word, it says, um, that there is not enough space for a fence and shrubbery on the side. What was, what, what do we do about that?
It's an existing driveway, and with the driveway we put in, there's not enough room for fence and shrubbery. Obviously, the neighbor got noticed if the neighbor thought that he needed something different because the shul could come here and ask.
The driveway is bordering the neighbor's property?
Yes, you, you can see on, on A one, the existing driveway, uh, it, it starts on the south. There's an entrance in and a place where parking can be, and then there's a, and, and a, a, a second, uh, exit, uh, from the driveway. It's a typical residential driveway.
And how far is the neighbor's house from the, uh, driveway?
Forty feet.
So has there been, people use that driveway for walking also?
No.
Has there been any problems being that so close to the property line?
No.
As far as you know, the neighbor doesn't require any type of.
No, no, we'll, we'll.
We'll find out if that is true.
Neighbor's name.
I'm saying all the time you've been there, you haven't had any problems.
No. Okay. I'll open the republic. Can anybody from the public that'd be here, please come forward?
I have a question, if I may first.
Yes.
Mr. Sable? So, that garage in the back, I mean, move that, make some parking in the back. The reason is because it's on Lanes Mill, so if you need no place to park on the street in case to.
The chairman needs the septic, it's right there.
What?
The septic is out here, the chairman can go over there.
To the septic, okay.
So on the right side of the house, there's a twenty-foot, um, gravel, a little bit at the back, yeah, like a hundred by a hundred of gravel. I see plenty of little, um, runners that go in upon hundred cars and stuff.
Right, okay, so I think the board members should understand that there's a lot of parking. All this gray area.
Is this brown?
For a good park, which is important, you know, because it's long Lanes Mill.
And you, and you driveway, you can set us twenty feet? Whatever it is, it's enough to, for a park to go back.
Okay, can you make sure it's not? Good.
Okay, well. Anybody? Anybody from the public that'd like to, please come forward.
Chairman, if I could just quickly, I just wanna point out, I had talked earlier, in terms of waivers, uh, they, they do require several design waivers, uh, as indicated in our, uh, cut comment two under, uh, under row number one, they include curb sidewalk and shade tree utilities.
That was a nice one. And, okay, there is nothing way of it?
Yeah, that you can have a.
They require waivers based on the current ones.
Can we somehow make it happen?
Well, we can add the shade tree utility.
I don't care about the shade tree.
Shh.
Especially can have other people from Horizon walk somehow.
They're following anywhere.
I, better than others.
It's a very limited area, you have to make a quick sidewalk.
Okay, Mr. Planery.
And in curves of both sides, there's no property, but it's a park.
Well, it, it's a, a county road, so if it needs to go to the county, the county can make a difference. The easiest thing to do would be put the sidewalk right on his property so that anybody walking down the road, they would have a sidewalk along his property far enough back in case the county ever wipes that road.
I think that's an important point.
And if it's that far back, you don't leave a curving.
I believe, I'm not certain of this, but we've had deals with the county. If the absence of curb is going to have to be at minimum ten feet back.
And, and, and that's why I'm saying to put it on his property, because then that will be ten feet back from the.
Okay.
Okay. But how, how, if the county gonna make a problem with curving for cars to go on both sides, or if you utilize?
County always makes problems.
No, no, but we're making an approval based on that parking, because we don't want parking on, on lanes.
No, no, the, the county is not gonna do anything with changing an existing driveway, so the existing driveway.
We're gonna put curving, new curbs, probably, on the street. I think it allows a cut.
Normally, normally, the, there's two purposes for curving. When you put curving along the entertainment, it's for, uh, drainage, to channel the drainage, and it's to provide separation between the sidewalk. And that's normally with a sidewalk that's three to four feet from the curb. Normally, normally, the, there's two purposes for curving, when you put curving along the end pavement, is for drainage, to channel the drainage, and it's to provide separation between the sidewalk. And that's normally with a sidewalk that's three to four feet from the curb. As Terry indicated, the county, if you want to put a sidewalk in, and you're not going to be, uh, and you're not going to put a curb, they want it ten feet from the pavement. So we would put the sidewalk more than ten feet from the pavement on his property in an easement, uh, a sidewalk easement, uh, so that, that the, the general public will walk on the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Flannery.
Thank you.
Did you swear from testimony before this?
I affirm, which is one I saw by the previous application, the one that, they did a campus ordinance, because the board passed something that I had no clue what the consequences of that is. I just want to make sure that the board understands in this application, what they're doing. He's not required accordingly to the township ordinance to put in parking, because it's less than eight hundred square feet inside sanctuary, the main sanctuary, and that's correct. But he does, is providing a lot of parking, and he's providing that parking on gravel. I just want to put the record straight, because this board is going to approve, and I don't disagree, because he's not required to put a parking, but you're giving a parking lot on gravel.
Seven are on asphalt.
What?
Seven are on asphalt.
That's what I said.
This part is asphalt. Here's the gravel that, that was probably.
Put overfloat.
So where is the?
Well, he, he wouldn't put that gravel in if he was just doing the shul. The gravel's already there and, and he.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm talking about frontal there.
The front over here, this is all asphalt. Asphalt drive.
In the seven parking spots.
Seven parking spaces.
So, so, so it makes it even better. He's giving seven parking spots that he's not required to do on regular asphalt, and then he's still giving a whole big bag of gravel in the back, and the board is okay to have parking on gravel. No, that's not, it's not a problem, I'm just clarifying what you're doing. The only question that I would have had to the applicant is, is this existing shul now? Is there appraised services now? You can answer that.
Yes, there is.
Did you get a violation? That's the reason why you're here for the blackboard?
The, uh, whether there's a violation is irrelevant to the consideration of this case, especially not the enforcement report.
No, 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 I have the right to ask and the answer.
And I have the right to say it's not relevant, so please move on.
Okay, so I'll leave my comment, because usually when people come to this board, it's because of violations that they received. And interesting enough is that this guy came for the board not because he has a violation, because in this town, as I'm quoting from Chaim Abadi, every week comes in a complaint against existing shuls, that people have shuls in their houses, or it's not change of use, as an illegal change of use, and the township issues violations. I'm just quoting that just because it's mind boggling that you have a Jewish town over here, and you have Jews complaining against shuls. If this would have happened in Jackson, and we, the complainers would have been Gentiles, they claim would have been that they're anti Semites, or saying Jews do that. I know you don't like to hear that, but that's the truth. So listen, when Jews do that, it's okay. And I'm just saying this is because it's wrong, you have, you have over here people complaining against shuls, and it's wrong for them to do it. You could try and shut me down, I will still stand over here and say the truth, if you like it or not. Thank you.
And, uh, obviously the board will disregard the comments that are not appropriate, and I can tell by your demeanor and your reaction that that's exactly what we're doing.
Chairman, I, I have a concern. Now, what is, usually you get applications for shul, we get, we get a rabbi coming here, we get a bunch of congregants.
Rabbi's waiting?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Right next to, to the step line.
That's, that's the owner.
The owner of the property.
Okay, usually, but, but my problem is, not my problem, my concern is that it's not end of AKA, it's impossible. Okay, so the reason is, big kitchen, big room, lot, big parking lot. I don't see any people, I don't, Horizon's there, but.
Put, put an approval that came to some.
But we, we know that's not enforceable.
It's not going to be some.
Okay, how, how do we know?
Where are the architectural plans?
What? And, so, it's gonna be nice.
Where are the architectural plans? I, I, did you put them up on the board?
What?
It's, it's not a mini factory, that's what we sent to you. What, what is happening now? What? In this building, right?
Okay, thank you. Nothing. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, motion, fast, so let's get it.
I'll be very quick, sixty seconds. I affirm motions ahead of the, I guess, one, two, almost all of our elected constituents on the line. I just want to say, uh, this applicant, I know he's a great guy, he's at every party in town, so if he can't make, he won't be making the party hall in his place, it's not going to work. If he starts a no party hall, then you can trump him.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with a problem like to be heard? Sign on, we'll close the poll, go, and ask for motion on that, okay? We have a motion, a separate argument, please.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flanscomb.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raiset.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a request for the next application. Um, we have, we have three left. Uh, one of them is another representative, I'd like to take that one.
Which one on the floor?
That would be number four, Abraham Chop. Take that one.
Abraham Chop, are you ready?
Next one, I'm going to ask, is there, is there any?
Mr. Shumon, are you here on that?
On number three, is there any opposing?
Abraham Chop, go head up to the microphone, go head up.
Are there anybody opposing number three? Any attorneys?
We can absolutely hear just comments, okay.
Okay, so, okay.
Just assessing where we're at.
Okay, then, Chairman, we'd like to go through three boards.
This is an easy one, Chairman. Uh, it's perfect, I didn't have all the parrots apply. Uh, Charles, I don't believe you need any waivers, they're making contact.
No.
Okay, motion.
Hold on a second, Mr. Shumon, please raise your hand, I think you swore from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, none of the. Licensed professional engineers are there, and your client is with you, is that gentleman?
Yeah, gentleman.
I'm sorry?
Abraham Chop.
Mr. Chop, do you swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, none of the. And require Mr. Shumon to be a professional in this matter?
Mr. Shumon.
Yes, Mr. Shumon, tell us what.
Just a little notch, what are you doing?
Uh, we're taking, uh, uh, two hundred feet of property, uh, proposing, uh, three duplex lots, all performing. We'll be reconstructing the curb and sidewalk, and, um.
Zero variances?
Yeah, there are no variances.
Leaving all the sidewalks?
If Mr. Bo would just be kind enough to tell me how many street views we would require for work, it's, I'll go on the record, it's more than.
I couldn't tell you off the top, I couldn't head, you want to recommend, is that the applicant agrees to, to give us the appropriate number for, for UDO requirements, we can address any complaints.
Okay. Mr. Shumon, is there anything in the hearing report that you cannot agree with, you want to know?
There is none.
You agree to everything?
We do.
Thank you. Any questions or any board members? Sign on, we'll open the public, anybody from the public like to be heard in this application, please come forward. Sign on, we'll close the public. So Isaacson moved, and Mr. Meyer seconds, roll phone, please.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flanscomb.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Raiset.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next application is SB twenty-three sixty-one A A, this is that twenty-three circle place made by Abraham Y. Erevis, the change of use to convert existing house to a school.
Okay, um.
I'm sorry, a shul, I missed.
And that's very. Terry, could you go through the report? Please be quiet into one of you's.
Letter. Again, this is a change of use, uh, so on page two, you, you have, you have a number of submission waivers under item one, uh, under item two, there are nine waivers, uh, including shade tree building, letting us get in trash recyclables, grading, uh, and buffers grading for parking through this, uh, set for less than twenty-three from property lines. I recommend here in the application, uh, and then decide if you like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, how's the progress of the applicant? This is a quick preface, uh, so this house of worship has been here for already, I think it's approximately fifteen years. This applicant purchased the property, it was already a house of worship. Uh, he did not know that, did not have the requisite approval to be a house of worship. Uh, he's continuing to use, in fact, uh, it was three or four years ago, he received tax exemption, um, from the township, and he, he didn't know there was any issues.
How is possibly a tax exemption?
It's owned by a project, it's properly owned, uh, by five hundred and fifty degrees.
It just has to be owned, you don't have to, li- literally use.
It has to be owned, it has to be owned and in use, uh, and then it has to meet certain criteria of the township. And I forget, you know, he did not know. But, I, I'm just saying, you know, that when he purchased the, the building, it was already a house of worship, which wasn't something that he was starting to operate, uh, recently, a house of worship, and I was saying, hey, everybody, I didn't know, I did something wrong. Just wanted to.
Mr. Pepper, I think it was down, he gone for change of use, I mean, not showing us any sight plans, because he asked for exemption.
We're seeing for example, yes, now let me, let me just.
Okay, what's with the parking?
Parking area fifteen parking lot.
You're not gonna build anything additional on the floor?
No, no.
The outside to change?
There's no change whatsoever to the.
Same colors, same size, same stuff?
Everything you see is that.
Yeah, because Mr. Segal, if they do any changes to the property, they must have a site plan. We're asking for an exemption.
And this is currently a class. It says class, but it's used now, but. Have you been to the show inside?
Many years, not a very recent.
What was the last time you were there? So you have no idea what's going inside? Now, this is class.
I can attest to it, there is no school, there was some students learning in there, but there is no, nobody's using it right now.
It's not a call or nothing?
Not at all.
It wasn't, not now, right?
Temporary, there was some students.
Shh, well, that's fine.
Nobody, okay, condition, not to be.
Okay.
And in the basement, there's no kitchen, uh, there's no.
Yet.
You see, I would definitely put there, and we're trying to get, we have to come into the board.
You're not renting out any part of this building, Sean?
There is no kitchen. No, not a living room, right, correct?
No classrooms, nothing, lounge room?
There's a, a shop they want to visit, bring some, of, 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 uh, anything on the basement.
Okay, Brian, what's with the sidewalks? You have?
Uh, there are, uh, there are existing concrete sidewalks.
Okay, and Terry, are you okay that they can fit fifteen parking spaces behind or underground?
It has been depicted on a site plan, I can't tell you for sure whether you can fit.
Sure.
I have issue that.
I guess that's, I applaud the fact that we're taking something that would not be done right now, we're trying to make it right, but if this was just, somebody said, I just bought a house, I want it to, into a shul, you would have a pretty picture that Brian would be drawing, shows this is where everything is.
And we would want all the parking lots fixed.
I don't think.
Right. So.
A normal site plan, you can see how it goes in and out, where the lights are gonna be.
So why?
What I'm hearing is you're not comfortable with the plans as a park.
My question is, why is this different if they would come as a building?
Why is this different? I'm not saying that this is not.
If I would have to feel like content will make you.
Quite in this case.
Well, I, I think that's a legitimate point. You could say you wanna see these improvements, if that's what you think is appropriate.
I'll ask you, what was the fourth thing? Mr. Segal, you, you think that you?
I remember you had already, you had already told me, sorry, I won't give more advice. I'd like to hear more from, if there are neighbors here, a house of yours, is, is it affecting the neighbors, is it, you know, housing now?
Oh boy.
Uh, you have one, one of the neighbors who, who's here, I mean, uh.
Mike, Mike.
Andrew Green, who lives on Woodland, property behind it, this, uh, applicant also wants a property, uh, is behind it, it's not part of this application. You know, the vacant lot behind the, the shul that runs on Woodland, um, we, we agreed, uh, Mr. Green's property, we put trees, he's concerned, uh, that the vacant lot behind it, it's hard to see, it's, it's.
It's gonna be used as a parking lot?
He's gonna use the parking lot.
And he wants it?
We were putting trees to block so you could not use, uh, you could not drive from back and forth, it's illegal to use that, that lot as a parking lot, um, so, and I, I told him, it couldn't be, it's illegal, and, but we would agree to put the trees up, so that you can't drive from.
Or fence it and something.
He asked for trees, and, and we're fine.
Okay.
Can you?
I would like to hear from the neighbors, see what our position is, let's, let's deal with it.
Chairman, can we specify what kind of trees and where exactly that is?
Well, those trees are on a lot that's not part of this application, so that's a.
Are you putting trees on the other lot?
On the other lot, right, so that's a private agreement between the, the two owners.
Okay, uh, I'm hoping to have a break now, I'd like to hear what the neig-, what the neighbors have to say.
Is there a trees that you're putting on?
Yeah, please come forward, please come on.
The trees you put on the neighbor's, on the neighbor's lot in.
Are you, are you, are you together?
No.
No.
Okay, so one at a time, we'll speak. Okay, you have to be sworn in and raise your right hand.
Swear from testimony before this court, be the truth, all truth, and that's true. Does this make your name? Uh, Lou Williams, living on, uh, Woodland Drive, which is the, uh.
Alan, do you have this filling?
Yes.
What's his last name?
Lou Williams.
William.
Yeah.
All right.
So, my.
I didn't hear you clearly, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm talking quickly, I'm, this is, I'm gonna go start with.
Okay.
So, uh, one of my concerns is.
You have one just seconds?
Excuse me? Oh, okay, there you go, all right. All right, okay, so, uh, my house is, uh, on Woodland Drive, so my backyard is, uh, back there, my concern is when they start doing the parking back there, uh, I guess, you have lighting and stuff that comes in there, it's a little noisy. I'd like to see at least a barrier fence or something like that, I know there's some trees in the back, problem is that some of those trees, they just get high, all they do is actually hang over my fence, which I, means I'm responsible for cutting down, so that's my concern as far as what's changing over there.
So if you get a, a fence, you're okay with that, would you?
Yeah, it was a, you know, a barrier type fence.
A fence, and then I think he said trimming the trees, that's on his property? Could you agree to it?
Yeah, he could.
We trimmed the trees on our property, we can go on.
But you know what, I mean, if your tree is, your tree's, there's a hangover, right?
Yes, we did, we have no problem trimming trees, we don't get no problem with a fence, uh, and, and you're, you're something about the lighting, we'd also agree the creature shade light away from his property.
But I, I think if you do use it as a parklot, you do have to come back to the sport, right?
No, we, we, we're fixing up, he's, uh, yeah.
No, he's talking about the existing asphalt.
Yes.
We're not talking about park, we cannot park on the other lot, that's not part of the application, it's okay.
Yeah, so you.
Can you discuss with him and just confirm which property line you're putting the fence along and how tall that fence is gonna be?
You're over here.
Along, okay, so it'll be along the property line of what number housing?
Um, eight, six, six.
To the rear.
So you're shielding just for this one neighbor, or you're gonna shield all the neighbors of the past?
Again, the next one will be our property.
Okay.
Which is reporting, we can put the trees, um, for the, for the vacant lot.
Six foot fence?
There were trees right here that just, they could just cuddle there.
To the other lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Griton.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I thought you asked a question.
Yeah.
The noise is not concerning to you, under parking in and out?
Well, it, it is, I'm hoping that the barrier fence will block some of that and stuff like that, you know, you know, just trying to be, you know, understand this stuff.
The gravel park lot, it works for the.
Well, the gravel park lot's in front of the house, so everyone will hear that and stuff like that, it's just more, excuse me.
What's in the back?
Uh, the back is the asphalt, is the asphalt, the gravel asphalt.
So is asphalt in the back, and gravel leading into the asphalt?
Yes, so that's what we're concerned about.
Just wanted to say that it's, it's existing for thirteen years, I think.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I, I, I did see a lot of stuff going on, but I did hear a few things, maybe a little off K C sometimes, but after that, it was kinda just, you know.
Was there any school inside, the young students, thirty years old?
I used to hear, I, and once again, I could ju-, jump to the back, I, I quote one time, the other house, like, so maybe there were just a bunch of kids playing basketball or something going on, not a lot of yelling, screaming, something like that, but it was noisy at times, like I said, I'm just trying to see if we could just improve that, to make it a little better.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Griton.
Anybody else in the public would like to be heard, please come forward, please come forward.
My name is James Mooney, I live at eight ninety Woodland Drive, I'm, uh, the lot between, um, Mr. Green.
You have to be.
Please raise your right hand to swear in before this court, be the truth, all truth, and that's true.
Another hand, right.
Swear, they'll tell the whole truth, all.
Okay, please proceed. So, they didn't use the, uh, house as a school for like two years, and there was students in there up until recently. Um, they just tore out all the trees in, on the lot in between my house and Mr. Green, and that's why I was worried about whether or not they were gonna try to make that a, a park lot. And that's why I was more, you know, afraid of.
Okay, so I think you heard from the applicant, they cannot make it a park lot unless they come back.
Would they be able down the road, if they go for variance, to be able to make it a park lot?
They have to come back to the board, that you will be noticed.
We'd have to actually go to the zoning board, as, as a parking lot cannot be solely used on the property, not permitted, we have, you have to install the accessories.
Unless your town should, to, to.
You're pushing to consolidate the lots.
If we did a lot of consolidation, then at that point, it would be a whole.
A whole side plan.
It would be everything, yeah, but that's all getting.
But sir, to answer your question, question is, could they apply and get an approval? Yes, they could apply.
But that's not part of the obligations.
The question was, could you apply and get it? Yes, they could.
But, but you'll get noticed, and they cannot do without noticing you and coming back before. Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I, I'm, I'm concerned, I really wanna see how the, what, beside the property, from the outside, the inside, how do the parks and parks?
Let the public speak.
I, I think it's important for us to see how the safety aspect of the park lot function, that's what I would like to see.
So, okay, Mr. Jackson, I need you to clarify for the board, if they applied for a site plan exemption and they're entitled to it, can the board request? Though we need to see more information.
I think that the whole idea of a review is that the board can impose reasonable conditions that are calculated to safety, circulation, compatibility with the neighborhood, that's inherent in the idea that they have to come to the board.
Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry, I point the board to page two of Terry's letter, that says, even though this is an exemption, there's a whole list of items they were supposed to provide, that they didn't provide.
So, but your, your question is, can you require it then, so my answer is yes.
I, I, I gave some feedback to the board, the board is a little uncomfortable when we don't have it, okay?
Or safety, pure safety?
I think rather than the board canceling, I mean, the board at this point can just deny the waiver request for parking areas, parking calculation, landscaping, lighting, topo, proposed grading, location of documents, documents, the board can go through Terry's list.
Let the public speak first.
And say, we don't approve these submission waivers, your application is not ready yet.
Although the neighbors are okay with it.
I don't think so.
Hold on, you're not finishing?
I'm not finishing. Okay. Okay, back to the public.
Sir, your name?
Obani Malafi.
Please spell your last name.
M A L C H.
Your address?
Six oh six South Woodland Drive.
Do you affirm that the testimony will give before the court the truth, all truth, and that's true?
I affirm.
Please proceed.
I've been going to this, uh, shul for approximately fifteen years now. It, uh, always been there, we use it for, on Shavas, and, we use it during Yom Tov, and now they just started, uh, Myer at the nine, I think they're there for nine o'clock.
So it's not Shavas?
Before that, the whole reason we're not using it, uh, we did stick our neck out and help, try to help by Sheva, to have a place to stay, and we didn't have anywhere else to go, and, uh, we were there for two years, and since then, we removed them out, there's nobody there now. Uh, the neighbors could probably testify that before, uh, two years ago, we never had a school there, we never had a Sheva there, there was nobody there, it was very quiet.
But you understand that should the board approve it, it's strictly for the shul?
If they approve it.
But you cannot write anything up?
We're not looking to go back to that same situation.
Also, it would be part of the parking.
Uh, there's plenty of parking along the fence right here, this is a, a very large area, and all the time people drive.
Don't need the board to say, we don't see it, showing us a nice picture, we don't see where the parking is.
And what are they doing? Maybe just a few dollars, a bit of a plan, we don't need the intensive, uh, architectural plans, we just need basic idea, mi-, the minimum paperwork.
So if this is a minimal plan to engineering, show, pick up the parking, pick up the minimum, what are you guys?
I personally like to see that, I, I don't, you know, my, my, my only question is, are we granting them a waiver of the, of being an gravel park in gravel? If a new applicant will come in and we want a gravel park in that?
Yeah, but it looks like, uh, to me, it looks, it looks like a neighborhood shul, I mean, I, I'm, I'm more, this is more neighborhood shul than a lot.
I, my, my, my response is always to check for them.
Okay, that is true, as well.
You want?
It's a dead end street.
You know, now, you know, the issue is that when you have members of the congregation coming up and making an argument, you support the application, you're giving the applicant two bites of the apple, they're represented by council, that represents the organization of the shul, you shouldn't have every member of the shul be able to come up and make a case for the shul as well, it's like, uh,
That's, I mean, I'm.
You, you can, um, you, you can.
Mr. Malafi, you finished? You said what you have to say?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's the tricky application I've ever seen.
Mike.
For this house, every single time that we walk in, and we have fifty people sitting here, for or against, they always.
Uh, it's one thing to say, I live in the neighborhood, I think it's important, it's another thing to say, well, we don't have the road here, and then they're like arguing in favor of the application.
They're talking about, it, you, they asked me if I, if I've been to, if I've gone to that, uh, shul, as has been many years, here you have people, members who actually come and go there on a regular basis.
That part was not a problem, when we start talking about, you know, the road and the landscaping, and how it affects the neighborhood, et cetera, I.
Well, the neighborhood here, and, and they.
Okay, does anybody else in the public would like to be heard? You have to be affirmed and.
Sir, say your name.
Mayor Ruol.
Please spell your last name.
D R U L L.
And your address?
Four twenty-three Central Avenue.
You affirm the testimony will give before this court, be the truth, all truth, and that's true?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
I'm fortunate to pray in the synagogue at the Shavas, I learn there every night, can tell you, it's no longer used as a school, it's absolutely empty, the basement lights have not been turned on since the school left, um, it happens to be, like you said, uh, it's gonna be a Shavas, it's not, we don't have a group that comes during the week, we struggle even to put together ten people every night for Myers, few people learn there at night, it's primarily a Shavas shul, you have maybe five, six cars parked there in typical Shavas, at night you have tops, tops ten cars, you're talking fifteen spots for, uh, school, we don't use more than ten spots, we have asphalt in the back, and it's a, a shul that's used primarily on Shavas, tops an hour dur-
Oh, you see what's happening?
Okay.
Tops an hour during each weeknight, um, the, the shul is just a neighborhood shul, as you described, and it's been operating like this, I, I've been down here for about ten years, I, I believe it's about thirteen years old, nothing's changed, I don't see any, uh, you know, neighbors that are to start by anything, it's a plain and simple shul that's used primarily on Shavas, and one hour at night, not more, not less.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the public would like to be heard? Sing now.
I affirm, I'm reading over here, on November fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, a violation was issued. Illegal change of use from single family to assembly shul. In the way, how do I have it? Because I found out that it came in as a complaint from the neighbors. There was a dispute after fifteen years operating the shul, and they decided this to go.
What are you painting from?
From a violation issued.
But where, what is, what document you have? How do we know that hearsay is, uh, reliable?
Um, as I always say stuff, and it's always reliable, you start to.
Where, what are you reading from?
I'm reading from a picture of a document, if you want, I'll email it to.
You, you have the document, how do we know it's authentic?
So you wanna say that I'm lying?
Yes. I wanna say, I want you to have an authentic document, so we know that it's reliable, and then.
So you want me now to join the meeting and go print this out and give it to you?
No, I don't want you to join the meeting, I want you to come here with a document that you, you say is an exception to hearsay, we should at least have the documents, so we know that that document is reliable.
So what do you want me to do now?
I, if you don't have the document, I don't think you should testify about what it says, because that's hearsay.
Okay, so I'm not testifying what is, what, what it says, but I'm testifying that what is said before is true.
Great. So thank you. So far.
Hold on. And we have, we have a situation, you have two disputes between two neighbors, an existing shul, working so hard, and we saw these gentile and neighbors coming up over here before, it was so beautiful, they said, they have no problem, it's existing, we have no problem, and we have, and, and I know the attorney doesn't wanna to say the word, so I won't say it, the non-gentile neighbors, the one that they had the dispute, went in and put in a complaint against an existing place, again, I wanna call them out, I know they're not coming up over here, but putting in a complaint at an existing place, I think is a Jewish antisemitism, antisemitism. That means it's complaining against an existing shul that is working, and going and putting it in a complaint in the township, I think isn't wrong, and I know you're going to say before, you, you said it's by common is inappropriate, the attorney over here said before is, he came up and he was trying to explain that it's an existing place, and he was not gonna say is why he's over here, he's not over here because of the property owner tries to get a tax exempt, he hasn't already, so why is he over here? What changed now? I just wanna clarify is that the thing that I said before, that there's a document, that I can't say anymore, but it's true, because I said it, it's true, that's the reason why he's here, thank you very much.
I would, I would instruct the board to disregard that, but I didn't understand much of it, so take it as you may, but you know, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Okay, anybody, anybody else in the public would like to be heard? Sing now, we'll close in a moment.
If I could just respond to what was stated, like I tried to clarify, I believe some of the neighbors were concerned.
That everything?
Yes, like, yeah, sometimes I stay crazy, so, I, I, this seems crazy, at one point, uh, when some trees were.
Uh, uh, what you just meant to say is that when I spoke over here, I'm crazy, that is disrespectful, that is disrespectful from an attorney, this is disrespectful to call a member of the public crazy because you don't like him, that is disgusting.
Mr. Earl. Just, let's just take a breath, everyone, Mr. Pepper, please, scroll over, go ahead.
With regard to the property in the rear, trees were removed, I believe some of the neighbors were concerned that the shul was expanding, and they were gonna be create a parking lot on this vacant lot, as they, as we've all indicated, it's not the case, when, when the township was called, they then realized that there was no approval or change of use for this synagogue, the property did not know, that's why we're here before them. There was a violation issue, we've resolved it, it's not, it's not, it's not trying to hide anything.
I'll advise the board, this is not a board of retribution or enforcement, past violations have no bearing on what the application is going forward. Whether it's true or not.
Can we ask the applicant to bring in a site plan, just for circulation and parking?
I don't know.
A last motion, is that you?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, put your permission to request the applicant to bring in a site plan for safety, and I don't need, it's not offensive of raining, and none, none of that stuff.
Like, I, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that's my motion, I would love to see a site plan, just the circulation.
Until you see a site plan.
Sidewalk, something out, the internal process of the park lot work, can I just staircase to the building?
We have a second motion.
Okay, so we don't?
No, second, the motion tells.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve this application with submitted site plan to the zoning board, depicting where the, where the parking spaces are.
A second?
A parking plan?
Yes.
You said to depict a, a park. A, a site plan showing where the parking is, I think that's what they're gonna say.
Some people are terrible, they, they, they show fifteen, how many parking spaces, are we saying?
He said fifteen, right, is that what you said?
We're setting to fifteen.
And add the wall and satisfaction to the neighbors.
And, all right, but then, I think, the, 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 the. The trees and the wall as.
Fence.
At the fence, the tree.
And the fence. I meant the fence.
You need to clarify it, uh, before you go right down. John, you have everything?
I'll get them from the minutes.
Okay, so we have, uh, we have, we have to satisfy two neighbors over here.
Yeah, the, the fence, the trees.
There are, there are three neighbors, there are three neighbors, that's enough.
Uh, so, three, three neighbors, or we agree to satisfy all neighbors, and you agree to give a plan to Terry?
To Terry, to Terry's satisfaction.
To Terry's satisfaction, okay, do we have a second, or then we'll.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Sir.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
No.
Mr. Clancy.
Ask.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick.
Yes.
Mr. Eisenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ritz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Take your testimonies, please leave quiet as we have, we have to continue. Proud to that, to know how.
Somehow the board pushed the whole thing off. Next thing we were set.
Senate.
People who she loves. When I saw this place, I'm like, oh.
Are you still here? I think, I think he's good. Jeff Sores, let that be that. Tom, Bob, you guys.
Yeah.
Quickly, you can back in there.
Okay, Alan, let's continue. Shh, everybody, please be quiet in the audience. Okay. Alan, the next thing on the joint.
Yes, this is SB 2357 made by Senator Ray Torre. This is a major site plan, I'm sorry. I'm reading along with us, the change of use site plan exemption. Figure out the existing facilities into the school or at Dean's residence.
Okay. Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
I'm sorry, let the record reflect that Mr. Meyer recused himself from this application.
Okay, so get them, does Mr. Flanshaw come left?
Mr. Flanshaw also recused himself.
All your reviews are right, okay.
He told me earlier he was recusing himself.
Okay, please be quiet in the audience, okay, Terry, please go through the report.
Our February 17 review, Chairman. Looking under zoning, comment number two. We ask for information relative to architectural landings. We showed on, on the original submitted architectural plans, which are no longer on the change of use plans. I'm assuming they're not necessary. We will hear testimony shortly. Revised plans indicated minimum side door setback varies if required for the trailers to remain. Side door setback of eleven point six one feet versus the 12th authority standard. Recommendation is to reaffirm the variance. Comment number four, existing accessory side door setback must also be reaffirmed. Three feet versus seven. Comment five, per the buffer, we require twelve and a half foot buffer to show. Or perhaps to act upon that. Comment six, re- re- leave is also required in the parking within the buffer. Comment seven, design waivers are necessary. Include put out when there's a shade tree utilities and shade tree landscaping. We have gotten information relative to shade tree utilities and lighting. Therefore, the waivers technically are now only required for shade tree and landscaping. And finally, depending upon testimony, if required due to bus use here. You can hear comment on rating design waiver may be required without providing bus load. You can believe your testimony as to whether you have buses.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, I'd like to ask you, it's a lengthy report. And I think there is opposition here in terms of, they're going for a site plan exemption on that?
Yes, we, we've had a lot of discussions about that today and after this. I, I know that I have correspondence from Mr. Hirsch, who is in the audience. He has a matter of appearance, but he's here waiting. I've also discussed a matter at length with Mr. Shea and also with yourself, Mr. Chairman. And I, I think what the issue is, or one of the issues in this case, is whether this can proceed as a site plan exemption. As, as I understand it, the applicant's original approval had its origins in a, a letter, a zoning approval granted by the zoning officer in this town to allow temporary trailers, which my understanding, the ordinance only allows temporary trailers in conjunction with an existing school. I, I believe that this site was a, is a freestanding vacant site. It's across the street from affiliated, possibly affiliated group. But that said, there, there is no actual site plan for this application that was previously approved. So, what, the, the site plan exemption ordinance allows you to get an exemption from, for an expansion or a change of use from a previously approved site plan. And I think one of the threshold questions is whether this may proceed as an exempt site plan or whether they're required to get a site plan as if it were a, a blank canvas. I think Mr. Hirsch has a view on that, I think Mr. Shea has a view on that. I think the board has to determine that on a threshold basis. The, that question does not necessarily change ultimately that this board has the authority and the jurisdiction to review some kind of an application and grant or deny that approval. Whether, whether it's a, a site plan or an exempt site plan, I think the board still, you know, gets the ability to scrutinize this, this application and, and determine what's appropriate. The second question is the sufficiency and, and what has been provided to the board and what's been on file ten days beforehand. Mr. Bo indicated that there are a number of items that he, that there is an exemption for, a waiver sought for. And, and I understand from talking to the chairman that there is concern, as there is in every school, no matter what the grades are, about pickup, drop off, its impact on the neighborhood, its impact on traffic, et cetera. And what types of studies, whether traffic consults required, whether circulation plan is required, whether there's an opportunity for the board engineer to study, scrutinize, and address stacking, turning ratios, the stop lines or proximity to intersections, et cetera. So, I, I think in, in addition to the threshold question, there's also what I, what I would call a substantive question about whether the board has sufficient information beforehand to review this application in order to prepare it. And part and parcel of that question is whether the objectors have had an opportunity to see it on file so that they can respond to it in a meaningful way at the hearing. I will note that there is a provision in the MLUL that enables an applicant to supplement or provide additional information at the hearing on what they've submitted. But that, that becomes a question of discretion, whether you need it in advance for your engineer to study it or whether it's a type of thing that can be produced at the hearing. So, with, with that said, I would ask. I, I note also that this matter is also in court. And I've had discussions with the attorneys, I've looked at the pleadings. I don't think that that court case deprives this board of jurisdiction or takes jurisdiction away from this board. And I understand from talking to the attorneys, and they of course accept their representation that Judge Court actually said that she wanted us to go to the board before she made a, a ruling on whether, you know, whether the issue's an obligation. That's basically what we're asking.
Both the attorneys. I know we will have to see what, what feels, if we should listen to it.
Mr. Hirsch, uh, Mr. Shea, first you want to enter your appearance, then we'll have Mr. Hirsch to enter his appearance.
Absolutely, Robert Shea appearing on behalf of the AL.
Thomas Shea appearing on behalf of Congregation Sons of Israel.
And, and before I send this in, in the wrong direction potentially, Mr. Hirsch, would you agree that there is a threshold issue as to whether this can proceed under a site plan exemption? Because I don't want to have Mr. Shea address that if you disagree with what I just said or you think I'm off base.
No, wait, I absolutely agree.
Okay, so.
I think that's a critical, or additional, I can be addressed.
Thank you, so Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that you let Mr. Shea address his comments to, I know he has chapter and verse, he's prepared to address it, but I think Mr. Hirsch should be able to respond and then the board can address it, if that's okay with the board.
Okay, just, I think for the Robert, Robert Shea appearing on behalf of the AL. And, uh, Mr. Mr. Jackson laid out some of the issues that just the board is aware of. The applicant has been working on this particular project since 2017. It had its genesis initially in a request for a zoning permit to be issued by Ms. Segal for temporary trailers on the site. It was not just a random decision that Ms. Segal made. She issued the permit in around 1017 of 2017. I have the permit here, I can provide it to you counsel. But the permit not only came from her, but also at the recommendation of, of Mr. Hensel. The township attorney indicated that as far as he was concerned, the applicant at that point in time satisfied the dictates and the requirements of your, of your ordinance 906G, which is the placement of temporary trailers on the site of the school. One of the rationales for Mr. Hensel's determination was that he just didn't look at this parcel, lots nine and 11, independently. He looked at the entire campus, he looked at the campus across the street, which is a Hebrew school. All this property, nine, 11, and property across the street is owned by the same owner. His opinion basically, and testified to it under oath during series of deposition, was that as far as he was concerned, the mere fact that the street exists between those two parcels doesn't matter. He was satisfied that the, the school exists, these temporary, temporary trailers were needed, and therefore, as a result of that, granted the ability of the applicant at that point in time being, uh, the same applicant that we have here tonight, to allow them to place the temporary trailers on that particular site. It was not just a random submittal. As part of that 906G, there are specific requirements that need to be followed. Plot plan, survey, architectural plans, locations of a bumper's, general parking scheme, etc. It was, there's specific requirements under 906G, which I think is worthy of reading into the record, that, that the applicant has to, has to be limited to educational purposes, which obviously does. They, and should be noted, they have a state license, a license is in place, it had been operating for two years. It has been reviewed and analyzed by the state of New Jersey for the past two years. And that, otherwise, they wouldn't be operating period.
As a what? As a daycare or as a?
As a preschool, not as daycare.
Preschool.
Preschool.
So they're licensed preschool?
Licensed preschool, yes, sir.
What, what age is this?
Uh, from two, approximately two to, to four above.
Does it diet this license preschool?
It's a, it's a state licensed preschool.
Doesn't, doesn't diet this?
Uh, no, it's under the DOD.
Really? Terry, what's the difference between a preschool and a daycare? That's a good question. I don't know.
Section 900 of your, of your ordinance recites daycare facilities which are permitted in all zones within Lakewood Township. The, what Mr. Hirsch and I have been arguing for the past probably a year and a half, two years, is whether this site is considered daycare or a, or a school. Both are prohibited uses in a zone, daycare is permitted in all zones within the township. Schools, the school application that we made initially, which was a school trailer, is permitted in the open zone. So, there's no question that this use, I think Mr. Boyd would probably agree, this particular use is permitted in a zone unquestionably. We didn't apply for daycare, our daycare, the license is not for daycare, it is for preschool. License clearly indicates that, and the state of New Jersey has come down and analyzed it and reviewed it, and they're satisfied that five classrooms exist on this facility. So, unquestionably, we're not applying for a day, a daycare facility is a school that, that we've made application for under, under section 906 of your ordinance.
I have a question for you, is it, was it usual customary widespread practice for a preschool to have an associated parsonage with it? There's a home on this site.
That's correct.
And somebody lives in that home.
That's correct.
Is, is it, is that a typical accessory use for a preschool?
It's an accessory use as far as the campus of the school, the dean, the dean of the school that Rattley does.
I've just never seen that configured, and, and it's not up to me, I just wonder. I think one of the criteria for whether something's an accessory use or an additional use is whether that is, you know, common and widespread practice for it to be an accessory.
I think we're flipping back to what the, you just explained, administration building is the home of Rattley. The first floor is used for nothing other than conference workshops, perhaps PTO things and the like. Those two lots will be consolidated into one, but again, the concept and the understanding from the, from the beginning, that was all part of the entire overall campus, and that's what Mr. Hensel's opinion was based upon. So therefore, the zoning permit was issued back in 2017. Again, this is not a situation where someone was trying to do this, you know, under the cover of night. Application was made to the township, the appropriate professionals at that point in time made a determination. Whether they're right or wrong, they made a determination that we were entitled to proceed under 906G, which I started to start quoting.
Why did they consolidate it for us? The trailers are the same one as the house?
The trailer is, will be on the same, there was no condition for the zoning permit to consolidate as part of this application to consolidate. The reason we couldn't consolidate before, because it was a question as for exemption, tax exemption, and the township within the last year exempted the, the administrative building on Lot 9.
Why was it set up as temporary originally, why wasn't it, at that point requested to be part of the campus?
That's, that's the rationale under 906G allows for you to make application for a temporary classroom facility.
Instead, why, I would say it was the intention at that point to make it a long-term facility.
Yeah, ultimately it was, and it gives, it gives the applicant the ability under this section, again, it's part of your ordinance, that states temporary classes for schools, and it states the following, the township zoning officer, zoning officer, may approve the installation of temporary portable facilities at the site of the school for a period not to exceed two years, if you have further extension.
What you just read, it says the site of the school.
The site of the school, and that was the rationale that Mr. Hensel then had to advise Ms. Segal that in his professional opinion, the site of the school was not just this big a lot, but also the administration building directly adjacent to it, as well as the Hebrew school directly across the street, all owned by the same owner, and all licensed in, in one way or the other under the same ownership.
Which is the school, the ownership.
What's that?
Which is under the, the name of the school, rather than a private.
That's correct. So it's, it's, it's all owned by the same entity.
Is that permitted for it to jump across the school, the street though? That's on a separate lot and block, it's a different.
You're gonna have to answer that, so he, he used, he used Georgia Court College as an example.
I'm not asking, what, Mr., I'm asking you to support under the law the proposition that that ordinance can be used to authorize a, a school on the other side of the street.
I think the.
I think it can be done in, in, in a institute of, I think we have planned educational campuses that jump streets. I don't know that that's ever, I don't know if that's permitted in a zone, or if it's allowed for this type of use, because it's not a.
I think, I think to answer your question, the applicant took, went through the process, went through the process, going to the zone, the MASC rule, then who went to the township attorney, who had to make a determination based upon that. His conclusion was based upon course of conduct and a history of how other applications have been approved over the course of the last twenty, twenty or so years, thirty or so years in Lakewood Township, that this was not unusual. He recited Georgia Court College as an example, that has streets running through it, and buildings are considered to be on one, one overall campus, so. And again, whether, the, the terminus, so as far as the applicant was concerned, we attempted to go through the process, we ultimately got building permits issued, reviser issued, the trailers were constructed, went through a very rigorous inspection period. They were completed, the state came in, they were satisfied with the location, the way in which the operation was made, and as a result of that, ETCO was issued. Evidently, there were, there were letters being filed by Mr. Hirsch back and forth to the township council, or township attorneys and Mr. Seacare, Mr. Hensel, which really didn't involve us at that point in time. We attempt, we, upon us opening the facility, a complaint was filed by Mr. Hirsch on behalf of Rattley Tenler, and they attempted to shut down the facility, which were unsuccessful, frankly. And we have been in court for the last two years, when they expected this operation. The operation has operated for, since, since. The operation has operated for, since approximately May of 2018, is when they got the CVO. So it's been operating for almost close to two years now, best of our knowledge, with no particular issues. There've been the violations issued, there've been the tickets issued, there had nothing except a complaint by Rabbi Tenler. We're prepared, we're prepared tonight, and that leads us to the application that the applicant decided to file to legitimize and formalize these particular trailers into schools. The application was filed in August of 2019. The application was originally submitted to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment, through discussions with Mr. Dastie, if I understand, and Fran Segal shifted it to the, to the plane for review, recommended as a site plan exemption, as also a change of use.
What was submitted to the Board of Adjustment?
True.
What was submitted to the Board of Adjustment?
The original application.
This application?
That's correct.
And that was rejected? This is to me, that was rejected? That was rejected by?
I think it's to me.
Yeah, Ms. Morris is on, I'll bring it back. Do you have any correspondence or documentation?
I do, to deepen the file, to make some more representation that that's the case.
Mr. Hirsch, is that a recollection of it?
Oh, Mr. Hirsch.
Is it your recollection that this was originally submitted to the Board of Adjustment?
Why was it...
Are we talking about the temporary trailer?
No, I'm talking about this site plan, this site plan exemption application.
I am knowing.
Okay.
First time I've ever heard about it.
Was rejected by this ordinance?
That's what Mr. Shea's representation is.
Why was it rejected?
The reason, the reason was, it was rejected because they made a conclusion that it was permitted use. It was permitted use on a site, therefore it should be heard by the plane. And it drove from in September of 2000.
Was rejected the exemption for us?
Well, that, that may...
It was a safe application.
I don't think anyone disputes that this use is permitted, and that the planning board has jurisdiction over it. I think the question is whether a site plan exemption can be built upon a zoning officer that issues temporary trailers. I think that's the question, so, you know, that's why I asked, why was it...
I think my position very simply is that the applicant proceeded to file pursuant to 906G, pursuant to the ordinance that Lakewood Township passed, install the portable facilities. The ordinance also provides that we can obtain extensions of that portable as long as we have applications pending before the Board of Adjustments.
I'm sorry, there's an ordinance that permits trailers temporary without an affiliated school on a site to continue, pending an application?
I can tell you, I can recite to you, section G5.
All right. That sounds basically...
Does issue temporary approvals.
We're on the temporary approvals right now, so, you know, it has existed, we've gotten, we have the approvals from both, actually both Ms. Hensel and also Miss Segal. Plus on top of that, just to be clear, Judge Ford's state, Mr. Hirsch litigation statement, by motion, by order, and for at least ninety days pending the outcome of this matter being heard by anyone, whether it's this board, or the Board of Adjustments, or whether or not the board decides this is a site plan exemption. So the fact of the matter is that the applicant, and hopefully this message is delivered, has not shown way from any, any particular direction, except to comply, try to comply with the ordinances in every way, shape, or form since 2017.
Well, that, that doesn't go to the basis of whether this is a site plan exemption, or whether it can be built on the issuance of a permit for temporary trailers by the zoning officer. So is there anything else that you have in support of the argument that this can proceed as a site plan exemption?
The only thing I will say is that under the site plan exemption ordinance, six oh, I think six oh one, and again, as far as the way in which this application was submitted, it was submitted in August, September, like I said, it came back. I think it was a letter from Ms. Morris in and around November of 2019, indicating certain deficiencies. Those deficiencies were, were compliant, and as a result of that, we were listed on a plane review in January, there's really no mention, no issue as to whether or not we were or not exempted from site plan at that point in time for change of use. We were proceeding accordingly until Mr. Hirsch raised the sentence and submitted his opposition.
I think it's up to the board to decide.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, I think whether it was accepted, whether it was deemed complete, et cetera, I think this board still has a continuing role and responsibility to determine whether it has jurisdiction to the sense of whether you can grant exemption on a zoning officer permit of temporary trailers. Is there anything else that you have directly related to that?
No, I would, I would agree, because again, the ordinance indicates that, the ordinance indicates ultimately so the board made that call. And should be noted too, that we received Mr. Boyd's letter outlining a variety of different items that you requested was exempt, we probably wouldn't have been required to produce some of those items, we have provided those items. We're here prepared tonight to proceed with our engineer, we have a planner who's gonna testify as to the variances being requested, very minor variances, and also a traffic engineer who can testify as to the loading of, or the unloading of students. It should be noted that there are no buses on the site, so therefore there's no need to produce a bus loading.
That goes to the merits of the application, I just wanted to get on the threshold jurisdiction.
Mr. Hirsch, should I, Mr. Hirsch?
Mr. Hirsch, can you please address the board? I think you already answered your appearance, right?
Yes.
All right, you want to yield the tour to Mr. Hirsch, so I can get to give the thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry. Again, Tom Schaefer, with the Congressional Sons of Israel. The, this clearly is a threshold question tonight about whether or not this could be site plan exempt. I'm going to try to stick to the merits of that, I wanted just to briefly address a couple of Mr. Shea's comments. Pretty much everything he said about Mr. Hensel is not so, okay? Mr. Hensel didn't review anything, which is what he testified to. All right. He got a call from Fran Segal saying, "I'm concerned about granting this application for temporary classrooms and portable facilities under 18906G, it's just not on the site of the school." That's why when she signed the application, she put for Howard Hensel. She didn't want to take responsibility for it. So what happened is they have a discussion, and he says, extremely brief discussion, "I asked if you discussed all this in terms of the ordinance?" You know, about buffering, parking. "No, I didn't discuss any of that." So, none of that happened. He's, she said to him, he said, he said, she said, that this is, I think it's part of like a campus, and he said, "I asked him when he unsaid position, do you know what was going on on the other building on the site?"
Mr. Hirsch, I'm gonna cut you off with all due respect, because I believe, and my instruction of this board is that you have a continuing authority to determine whether an application for an exemption can be built on something issued by the zoning officer.
Right, I'll address it.
Whether the zoning officer was right, wrong, or indifferent, I think you can still decide that with whether Mr. Hensel signed off on it, whether the governor signed off on it, I don't think matters. I think the threshold issue is can temporary trailers, a permit that was issued, can that serve as the basis for a site plan exemption? So Mr. Hirsch, I don't mean to cut you off, but, you know, I don't think matters.
I appreciate that, and I'd rather do that, but there were statements made in the Radars, I just don't, I had to address this.
And then we'll just leave it as you dispute those facts, I just don't think it's necessary to take time with those.
So let's get down to the...
Unless the board disagrees with this issue.
Dr. Tom, they don't want to submit the paperwork that states how this application works, the site plan, that's the question?
Well, the question is, in my view, we are asking for a site plan exemption, and the site plan exemption builds from previously approved site plan.
Site plan means paid architectural, you can always only have a site plan exemption when you have an approved site plan.
When you have an approved site plan.
The submission items for a site plan are much more numerous than those required for a site plan exemption. So the site plan exemption has a different checklist of items and information that's required to be provided. So they're using the lesser requirements, and they've asked for relief from a number of them. If we're to require a regular site plan instead of an exemption, there's much more information than is required to provide you.
And why would you give money to not provide it because of money?
No, no, because if they have a site plan exemption, they don't have to, because the site plan was already approved previously, there's a lot of stuff you don't have to submit. But the question, I think the threshold question, is an approval for temporary trailers by the zoning officer, is that a previous site plan approval? And I think that's what I asked the attorneys to address. There were variances associated with this, weren't there, for parking?
Through the church.
John, isn't this a purely legal issue?
I think it is.
So how are we common ordinary citizens supposed to...
You can hear both the tony's.
Is it your point, John, that we, the board, should be making a legal determination?
My philosophy on a board is that the board makes findings, it's law, conclusions are fact, you listen to the arguments, attorneys, you take the recommendation from your planner and from your attorney, and you weigh everything, and then you make your finding was law and your finding a fact, which is the process, I think, that we're going through now. That's why I'm giving Mr. Hirsch an opportunity to address this.
Okay.
And I gave Mr. Shea an opportunity to address it, and then you'll have to decide on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Segal.
And one thing, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Are there any variances for parking associated with this? I see there are a handful of parking spaces, and there's a roadway, because I thought under the MLW, you could not get an exemption from a site plan when variances are implicated. Are there variances?
No, there's no parking variances, there's a slight setback variance of about half a foot.
So you need a variance for that?
That's correct. And that's called, that's called out in the interrogation board, and also results of those...
Okay, well, that's, that's not as bad. Now, when, when, from my discussions with Mr. Shea, there are about eighty students here?
Seventy, seventy.
And how many parking spaces were there?
There's five spaces.
So, Mr. Boyd, is that enough parking spaces for seventy students?
Under 906, there's one space for each classroom, seven provided, five are needed.
So that's the, okay, all right. I'm sorry, Mr. Hirsch, I cut you off.
It says 148 occupants.
No, it's only 78 in school.
So what is the rest double of occupants?
Because the statement of operations included some of the information was, I have the operation for the, that's a question, not 148, that represents the seventy.
Just reading what you gave us. It says 148, total first floor plan, total first floors equals 148 occupants.
That's perhaps the, more the likely, might be the UCC maximum.
I don't know.
But the maximum non-student presence on this particular location can be 78, and we have...
So we're acting in this.
Thank you. All right, so...
We shouldn't clutter that. That's far better.
All right, thank you. So, this use of the site is licensed as a childcare center by the state of New Jersey. All right, it's licensed under NJSA 30 colon 5B dash one, all right, which defines childcare standards and requirements of license. Your ordinance has a section specifically dealing with childcare centers that are licensed pursuant to that statute. And it says, if they're licensed pursuant to the statute, they require site plan approval by the planning board. The argument Mr. Shea and I had in court, which goes directly to this issue for you tonight, is that it's pretty clear to us, Judge, that this is licensed as a childcare center under that statute. Your ordinance specifically says if it's licensed and needs site plan approval by a planning board. What happened here is they applied for temporary school, temporary classrooms for a school on the site of the school, and the zoning officer can administratively approve that, okay? And there's minimum things, buffering, parking, ADA parking, even with the temporary approval, okay? Now, it was testified to that Miss Segal did not consider parking or buffering when she signed off on this permit.
Let's just...
Right? It's absolutely...
Please just, Mr. Hirsch, please just continue.
Thank you. So, your ordinance on exceptions, which is the issue before 18601 mid point oh two. So these are the bases as to grant a site plan exemption. Single or two family dwellings, including a special use, structures permitted of rent under applicable zoning, which is obviously out of... B, provide a change, a change, the change of use is not a change from a residential use to a non-residential use, or the addition to a residential lot, for a non-residential sister use. This is for a childcare center. C, an additions of not more than 1,000, 1,500 square feet to a previously approved site plan reuse. And then there's eight standards for that, if you hold onto that. Accessory buildings that are 400 square feet or less. E, customary added cofferable, that normal maintenance or replacement such as new roof planning, new siding, et cetera. Temporary construction and or temporary sales trail, all suit has been similar temporary schedule. This clearly is not a use that falls within a site plan exemption. This is a licensed childcare center. So what we have here, and the problem is, and my client's concern is not about a childcare center per se, it is a permitted use, we don't argue that. It's about having an appropriate plan, an appropriate site plan. This is a license for 78 children between two and a half and six years of age. They can call it a preschool, in the license, preschool just defines the age group, the license to the state.
Do you know what that is up on the screen? Do you recognize that? Ms. Morris just put that up there.
That's the application the applicant filed.
And what is that, that was what they filed with the zoning officers, I understand it?
That's what was filed with the board.
What's that word?
That's what filed this board.
And what does it ask for?
It's not asking for anything.
Well, this is a site plan exempt application calling this a school as the use. It's not a school. You have a different definition under your ordinance, a different section for schools. This is a childcare center licensed by the state of New Jersey, right on the license that says childcare center. And in any statute, your ordinance specifically refers to this statute, it says, if it's under this statute and you're licensed for childcare, you have to go to the planning board for a site plan approval, not an exemption. But what happened here? They submitted two drawings to the zoning officer with hand drawing sketches, which I'm happy to hand out, of two trailers. There's a couple other pages, four pages marked by Miss Segal's deposition. That's your plot plan. So we're going to have a childcare center for 78 children. This is the information that was before the zoning officer, and she's testified, "I did not consider buffering or parking when I signed the permit," quote unquote. They can argue all they want, I got the transcript with me, and the legal with that. So nothing was considered on this. So you have that use without a site plan, and now what do we have? Our request for exemption from site plan. So now, we walk in on the basis, this is temporary classrooms for the school across the street, and why does that stay on the site of the school? Because it can be administratively approved, because you already have school, you have a developed site, so you have a site plan or some other approvals for the existing site of the school. Therefore, okay, we can allow administrative approval with certain standards that they must check. This was a vacant lot. Now, there is, as they stated in their litigation certifications, this is a multifamily structure that Rabbi Burstein lived, he's lived there for many, 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 many years, and other people, they indicated, other employees of school live there. So that's on a separate lot, they want to now consolidate it. Okay, it's up to the board, that's fine, whatever. But that's not what the situation was when this all happened. So we have, we have this trailer, it's supposed to be temporary, and the rate mentioned to get the extension from the two-year approval, is if you can show the zoning officer there's an application pending before the board for the permanent classrooms, for the permanent classrooms. This is no mystical thing here, it's simple. You have a school, we need more classrooms, put in a portable temporary trailer while you're getting ready to get your approvals, and build your permanent classrooms. What do they do? After getting around this, so no site plan for a childcare center, no kind of review of any moment in terms of zoning, I grant you they got building permits, they, they get that, they'll stick trailers on the site, 78 children are operated here, no parking plan, no, nothing. And now they want to be exempt.
Can I ask you a question? Is, Mr. Hirsch, is there anything in, in concept that would prove... Is, Mr. Hirsch, is there anything in, in, in concept that would prevent the applicant from seeking approval for seventy-eight classroom, or seven, two trailers for seventy-eight students on this site, regardless of what you call, could they submit a, a site plan application for that before this board? In other words, could they take this plan and submit that as a site plan application? Let's say it was a vacant lot. They come and say, we have a house with a rabbi in it, and they want to put two trailers there, and we want to configure it this way, we want to have classes for kids from two and a half to six and a half years old, and we're going to call a school. Can they apply to this board for that site plan approval?
They can apply to this board clearly for a site plan approval, the jurisdiction of the board. The, the point is, it's important, and that's why we've been litigating so long, and I wish this wasn't thrown on you, the judge had decided the case instead of granting a stay. But it is not a school, it is a childcare center. Because the childcare center in your ordinance says parking will be determined based on this board by the number of students and the number of employees in the school. A school, the, the parking is determined on the number of classrooms, tutor room, I think, library, and one other item, one other room. So it's a totally different evaluation.
Sir, if they would move the older children to the trailers and move the younger children to the main building, would that satisfy you?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
If they move the older children to the trailers and move the younger children to the main building, would that satisfy you?
I'm not sure I follow that.
Your complaint is that there's younger children there, that it's a preschool or childcare, whatever you want to call it. If they move the older children to that site and move the younger children to the main building, would that satisfy your concern?
No, if the use is going to be, if the trailers, if you're going to allow quarters, trailers is permanent, you do. If that's going to be operated as a childcare center, regardless, I mean, the age, the age can go up to thirteen.
Some, some of the children are ma, are already in the main building, is that not correct?
When you say the main building, you mean the school across the street?
Correct.
There is another childcare center licensed in the school across the street.
It's not part of the same school?
It's, it's, it's got its own childcare license, from zero, from the age of zero to thirteen, it's got, it's got a separate distinct license.
Two separate childcare centers.
One in the school, and this one that they're operating.
Two separate licenses. And Mr. Renner, that's why, you know, that's across the street, it's on a different lot and block. That's why I asked the question, and I don't know the answer to this, whether this zone allows the use to jump across the street like it does in, in a campus, which I don't know that that's allowed in this zone or it's allowed for this type of use. I just don't know the answer.
But they're just defined administrative buildings here, that's why it says that.
Well, no, they're administrative buildings, they're saying is on the same lot with, in, in the rabbi's house. They're saying that that single family home there...
And they consolidate that with the trailers, that's why they're saying it's part of the school.
Yes, but...
I know the trailer is on some loft.
Right.
That's not a single family home, no, they, they, the rabbi's residence or administrative offices is in there.
Mike, Mike.
And that had, that, he's had a site plan approval for that non-residential use?
That's exactly the reason why we're here, just to make sure and to ensure that whatever is going on...
But the question is, was, did that get an approval, a site plan approval for it?
It's been in span of almost fifty years and that...
Does it have an approval for administrative?
We don't know where it was.
That was classified as a multifamily dwelling. You know, they say they use it as administrative office because the rabbi lives there.
Yeah, should Mr. Hirsch fight the fight? Part of the issue is...
I thought I was speaking now, because we're getting into issues.
Thought a fistfight, knew it had.
All right, so, so it, it simply comes down to, and I'll finish, I mean, it comes down to, you have a licensed childcare center operating on this site for seventy-eight children. You have no site plan fire approval, you have no review of a parking plan, ADA, or any of that. Nobody's reviewed that. The building department did review this site and issued building permits and a CO. We don't dispute that. Zoning, you had nothing. It wasn't in front of you as required by your ordinances. I read you the, the, the items that qualify for exemption from site plan. It does not fall in any of that. This, if this exemption was granted, you then would have had the childcare center that's already been operating two years despite our attempts to get the court to make them get a site plan approval, without any site plan approval and only some partial site plan if they were exempt for this use. You've granted childcare center applicants.
Mr. Hirsch, you're not against... Can I, Mr. Hirsch, you're not against the school, you just want a site plan, right now, to see it?
We want, we want, yeah, we, we want you to deny this site plan exemption. You have jurisdiction, and then here they're thinking of a full site plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's one, there's one thing I think the board should be aware of, Mr. Vogt just pointed this out to me. Eighteen nine hundred F childcare.
Subsection one C.
One C, the development of a childcare facility in an existing structure or in a standalone facility shall require a site plan review and be subject to the standard standards of the district in which it is located. Parking requirements shall be based upon evaluating the following factors. The maximum number of children for which the site is licensed, the number of employees present during the maximum shift, and the operational plan for the drop-off and pickup of children during the school day. So, we've had another take here. So the question is, you know, factually, is this an application for a school? Or is that, Mr. Hirsch saying, is it an application for a childcare center?
Why, if I can turn that, there's one second. Through the chair, before we get there.
That's one of the questions.
I, I don't think we're going through the whole application tonight. No, but I just, Mr. Hirsch, when I'm trying to get at the... You guys have to go through discovery, you've been in litigation for two years. Over, what's the issue? What is your client's issue? No, let me ask you, Dan, he's the, I mean, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of effort, litigation's not fun. What's driving, what's the core complaint that your client has?
Well, the concern, his concern and the congregation's concern was...
What's the bad thing you're afraid is going to happen?
Well, I'm not sure, I can't, the worst thing that could happen, there's no site plan approval, there is no parking plan, there's no pick-up and drop-off point that was ever approved for this, and then children will be killed crossing the street. That is the worst thing that could happen.
They've been there for two years, what, what has occurred?
It is safety, it is safety related to, that's why we have planning boards, that's why we have appropriate approvals for traffic, parking, and pick-up and drop-off when we're dealing with schools like this. None of that has occurred, but that's why, for three months, we contacted the town and said, we don't want to go to war, we want a name and a resolution, maybe you can set up a meeting. There's no site plan here, how did this get approved? How do we have two trailers sitting here for seventy-eight children?
I, I just want to know, Mr. Vogt, where is your site in relation to this site? Where's your client?
Across the street, across the street.
Where, where is your...
I'm just trying to get the, my bearings.
We're, we're...
Give me a second. Is everyone...
It's just off the picture, it's right down this room, maybe not on the...
There's just a little bit here.
I, I have a question for you. What is the difference on a practical level to me as a board member? I know that the checklist is a little different between if you need a site plan, if you don't need a site plan. I have an improvement plan in front of me. What, what is the practical difference? What don't I know from looking at this improvement plan and the plans that were given? You don't have a circulation plan? Well, I don't have a circulation plan, but that's something else. What, what am I missing in my improvement plan that you feel as a board member that...
As, as your board engineer report indicates, I think that your board secretary or administrator mentioned, there's a whole list of things that have to be on plan if it's not site plan exempt, if it's a full site plan that are not on this plan.
What are the things that matter to your client?
Pardon?
What are the items that are on that list that matter to your client? What are the items on that list?
What matters to my client's issue, but, but...
No, I, I think the board's question is, though, what's the difference?
What particular things do you want to be added?
We want to see on the plan how the parking is working, how the pick-up and drop-off is working, how the entrance and ingress and egress is working.
The improvement plan shows all that.
I, I, it, it shows something, but we don't believe it shows what the ordinance would require.
Specifically, what, what do you think that I'm missing from my...
It's, it's, it's showing five parking spaces. We're saying that's not the standard when you're dealing with a childcare center.
Oh, okay, so you're making the argument against the case that they want to present. But I have a question.
I'm making a case against having sufficient information for the board to properly determine a site plan for a childcare center for seventy-eight children.
I, I think the improvement plan shows here.
Well, Mr. Renner, I think that, you know, that, that's what I said at the beginning. I mean, and I think I used this maybe earlier, I said, how many angels dance on the head of a pin? Whether it's site plan exempt, whether it requires a site plan. We're going to get to the same issue, does, can the site handle it in circulation right? Is there drop-off, is there pick-off, pickup, number of hours, number of employees, etc. But I think you have to decide from a, a threshold matter, it's nine o'clock. Can this matter proceed as a site plan exemption? Is, is, what, what Mr. Hirsch has said is that you can't build on a permit issued by a zoning officer for temporary trailers because you're supposed to build upon a previously approved site plan.
So, there's no relation to this issue?
So, so, so that's what I think we have to know, because if, if, if the board says no, you have to, this should be a site plan application.
We don't, so, was there, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shane could decide either he wants to appeal that or he can decide, I'll amend and make a site plan.
Why is this a site plan?
Pardon?
Why isn't this considered a site plan?
Well, it's, it's, it's submitted as a site plan exemption.
What was the improvement, you want to know what is the improvement plan missing that a site plan would have that would help us make a decision?
Well, it goes to the definition, I think, of the type of case we have, we have to properly characterize it. So is it a site plan application or is it a site plan exemption? I think there's different standards that apply, different submissions, different waivers, etc.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask you, is this plan that we have, call it whatever you want, is it, do you have sufficient enough information to make a decision on it, or you need more information?
I can't tell you.
Mike, Mike.
We've heard about an hour talking about this application from two attorneys who are fine attorneys. What I'd like to hear is a professional who prepared this plan. Part of the frustration that we have with, with many of these applications, my review comment number one is the same for virtually every change-of-use school application. In bold, testimony should be provided by the applicant for the board summarizing number of students, will any students drive and park, will any parents drive and park, how many buses are proposed, will any students be dropped off and picked up by car? We typically ask questions about how does the site function? Does everybody come in and out of that loop? I see that there appears to be an access in the rear of the property. Is that in use? What's on the other side? There's a lot of questions that we haven't even gotten to because we've been discussing the legal balance of the case. That's valid. To answer your question, Chairman, I don't know. As an engineer, I like seeing more information than less, frankly, until...
And, and you don't have sufficient enough information?
We don't have sufficient enough information at this time. Can the attorney test it? We have not heard from the applicants, sorry, we have not heard from the applicants professionals. We have not heard from the public who may have concerns about witnessing how this site operates. There, there's a lot that we don't know. But before we can address any of that, we have to know what this application is. Is it okay to have it as a site plan exemption, or do they have to file a site plan?
So toward that end, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question?
Yeah, and I was number one, no, I was just going to ask Mr. Shane, why not bring a site plan? Well, okay, my second question is, why not bring a site plan? The first question is, you made a very cogent argument that you characterize this as a daycare. And you cited a chapter and verse of our ordinance that says, if you are daycare, you must have a site plan. That sounded pretty simple, A, B, C. So I'd like to hear your response to that, and then the chair's question, why not just bring a site plan?
Yeah, the, the first part, the first answer to the question is that we're applying for a school, which is under section nine oh six. Schools are permitted uses in the zone, schools lay out a different criteria for daycare, this is not a daycare.
Why, why do you have a license then for a daycare? Can, can you tear that up?
No, because a daycare facility licensed, branded by the state, includes preschools, kindergartens, daycares, nurseries, a variety of schools. There's a license that says daycare license, that does not in any way, shape, or form...
Okay, that's what, that's what you're saying, so we have to verify that.
Why, we can verify, no question.
I mean, maybe you're right, and that was what my thought was when I heard this.
And in, in addition to that, the application to the state of New Jersey says preschool, it doesn't say daycare, it says preschool. So the, the license and the submission of the application, along with every submission we have submitted to the township, indicates preschool. Francine Segal, Harold Hensel categorizes and analyzes it under nine oh six, which is a school. No question about it. So, that's what they did, I have the...
But that doesn't take it away from being a daycare?
Well, it, it does, it does.
And I'm sorry, to, to take away your... I'm Mr. Chairman, but I asked the board, do two-year-olds go to school? Do two-year-olds go to school?
No, preschool.
Preschool.
Daycare. Daycare, I mean, at what point, in, 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 in your experience and in your wisdom, what two and three-year-old goes to school as opposed to daycare?
I asked you something, what's this one daycare?
I, I mean, I, I can tell you what I think, but I'm not on the board. I think you guys have to ask yourselves that, does a two-year-old go to school, or does a two-year-old go to daycare?
Well, I think that, that has to be analyzed by these overruns.
I don't know, so... And in addition to that... That's not a religious overlay, that's why I go to your expertise.
I, I think, I think, if I might, one of the issues that was, that had been litigated over the past two years is what exactly we are, okay? What have we applied for? We applied in every way, shape, form to the township as a preschool. Preschool is specifically designated by the state as a, as a use, as, as well as kindergarten, as well as daycare centers.
Does that use have a definition of ages in there? Whatever statute you're talking about.
It, it does not. The, the state of New Jersey analyzes our application, they understand specifically what we're doing at the site. They understand that we have two- to four-year-olds, two, four-and-a-half-year-olds at the site, and they understand that our application for preschool is approved as that. The license itself says daycare center, but if I might, on the...
So make us a little ID, please. So if you made, could you make an application to the state to say, I'm a preschool, have nothing but two and three-year-olds?
Yes.
So then what is the qualitative difference between a daycare that has two and three-year-olds and a preschool that has two and three-year-olds?
It's, it's a matter in which the state of New Jersey and the application goes into defines. There could be inspection differences, there could be requirements. Each of these, we have five classrooms in these facilities. So those classrooms and the curriculum are also looked at by the state of New Jersey as well.
Okay, I'm being slow, I have a classroom, it's got two and three-year-olds. And the state comes in, and you haven't told them what it is, and they say, how old are these kids? They say, only two and three-year-olds. You get to choose whether you're preschool or daycare?
You get to set forth in your application the type of use that you're intending to do. Preschool, kindergarten, etc. And the reality is that from the land use point of view, we've, we've applied all the time from day one as a school. Should be noted that Mr. Hirsch was fully aware, he was, he was representing the interest of Rabbi Tenel way back when. And Mr. Jackson will tell you, there's a, there's a requirement of the land use statute, specifically in NJSA forty fifty five D seventy eight A, where Mr. Hirsch, who had come before the Board of Adjustment and contested the viability of whether or not we were a daycare under the municipal use law, or a preschool, or a school.
Can I interrupt you a second? I, I think this board can make a threshold determination whether this is a daycare or whether it's a school, what the criteria is. They're both permitted uses, and, and it's on what they're seeking. So I don't know that Mr. Hirsch was required to appeal the...
Well, I think, we spent two years, we spent two years' argument with that gentleman.
Can you answer the second question then, is, you guys, I don't know, you guys probably spent a lot of money litigating. How much more money would it be if you're taking that money and just do the application?
The shape, the, the, perhaps the, the biggest problem that the applicant has had with respect to this application is exactly that, we, we've submitted everything, again, full disclosure from the beginning. There has been no one indicating that we are not site plan exempt up till the... Mr. Hirsch indicated, sent a letter a couple of days ago to Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson had communicated with him first, and there was a letter that was transmitted to, copied to me and also copied to, copied to John, indicating what his objections were. As far as we're concerned, we have followed the requirements that we had to follow, which is, which is a site plan exemption for an existing trailer. And should be noted, as noted before, Ms. Segal testified that there are approximately three or four hundred trailers that she's approved exactly in this fashion over the course of the last fifteen to twenty years. So this is not, nothing unusual, as we all all know, in the context...
None of them became permanent?
Oh, yeah, they have become permanent, that's what she testified, so, so they evidently have, so I couldn't...
But let me ask you the question, Mr. Hirsch, what bad thing is going to happen other than some money and some time of applying for a site plan? And those questions, you want to litigate? Brian Flannery is cheaper than you guys are, that I know for sure. I, I, basically, I think it was, I think we have to make a decision. Are we going through without a site plan?
Can you do this as a site plan exemption, or do you want them to file a site plan? Amend their application for a site plan?
My only, I think I have a very good answer, but my only issue is that, as, as, as someone who's not very knowledgeable...
My only, um, I didn't get a very good answer, but my only issue is that, as, as, as someone who's not very knowledgeable in the law department, but I could look at something practically conceivable for us. And I have an approved plan that shows everything. I have whatever might be circulation, some kind of.
But Terry tells me he doesn't have enough.
Terry wants more. He always wants more. But I have enough.
What is the school bus system?
We, we, we had, we had this, um, this, this daycare on Clover. And we, we, I don't wanna say we ripped it apart, but it didn't have their act together. Then the next daycare came back. They had, Terry, am I right? They had their act together.
They did an application rider, which I would have loved to have had for every other one of these applications.
This funny classroom for this age, the code, you have to have this many teachers translate times five, and they, they had all the math. Because we ripped apart the first daycare and Shu, Shuwe Schmuckler was right there. He said, we're not doing that again. And he came back. It was chapter and verse.
And we have.
So, submitted. We're nice guys.
We have submitted.
Same in operation, submitted this plan, submitted.
Did our engineers see that? I don't know, because he's, he's testified in the.
All applications?
I mean, our engineers, they.
Mr. Herschel, I, I think you, you asked a question of the board and the board was deliberating. I think Mr. Renner said what he thought, I think, Mr. Sherrill, and I think you should keep it amongst the board and make this threshold determination.
You don't have to go first. Well, I always end up going first. Like, that tells me we need to do flesh of that a little bit more. Give, give us, if it's not a full site plan, give it, Terry, everything he needs. We're not looking to harm anybody here. But, um, this board tries to take seriously its obligation to ensure the safety of children. And we're bad drivers and they quit. We've got little kids running around, somebody could get hurt. And Terry needs the tools to analyze to make sure that we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's. So, what that means practically, I'm not, well, I'm not jumping on that spear, but I think we need more. But for me, as a threshold.
Just to save a little bit of this, just.
Okay.
Always.
Mr. Young, if I might just represent.
Can, can we please, the board is deliberating.
Okay. I, I may go along with giving a, a site plan exemption, but I do think that all the questions that Terry needs to make, uh, about the determination, we have to have a lot more information. May not be a full site plan or anything that his question has recorded. We need a report to say.
Yeah, I mean, look, we've.
Wait, can, can, I, I understand what you said. Can you please just make a vote on whether you need a site plan? I think you said, you said something, Mr. Renner, I think you should hear.
I think I have to know. As far as site plan, I don't know.
I just have a quick question. During the day, when the children are out, uh, do they have, what, what keeps them from running into the street, whatever his concern was? And they, do they have outdoor time during the day?
Uh, I have, I've, uh, referred Elizabeth, Elizabeth to testify, did not leave it.
That'll be provided.
We haven't got to testify.
And, and just so it's clear, we have, we received the, the Terry's, Terry's report of February seventeenth. We, we intended tonight to address each and every item. There's not one item on here that we, and we will indicate that we have a problem with addressing. We've either addressed it or addressed it through amended plans that have been submitted to the board for further review. So, and, and that includes, by the way, a, the method of dropping off the children that are by cars only, no buses. We intend to address that as well.
Mr. Herschel, I think we're on the threshold of determining the threshold issue. I still have to now hear from Mr. Isaacson. And then I think you should take a vote on whether they can go site plan exempt or whether they have to apply for a full site plan.
Drive now and see. Uh, Nate?
I heard you were first, man.
Chris, do you wanna go?
Terry did.
I hope he's first.
You don't have to say anything.
No, 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 um, I, I mean, I, I looked at the, I looked at the, um, I looked at what was provided. I mean, to me, it's enough. I know also, I know the property very well. I've been in their neighborhood often. Um, I don't understand why they couldn't provide a site plan. I don't know what the cost is for that. But, um, if we could possibly just hear some testimony and the Terry's, uh, concerns will be delayed and we'll be able to, uh, move.
So, if I could just address why they didn't provide, it seems like they didn't provide because they didn't think they were required.
Right, that's a question I think the board has to pass on.
And, and I understand, the question, they, they understood a decision that they do have to provide it to.
You said, that's a person hearing, that's, wasn't brought in court.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't get that.
I, I, I know.
I know it's a problem for this.
Mr. Herschel, I think.
Okay, uh, so, my, uh.
We don't have a court.
Yeah, I, I think that, that, the threshold question is whether you can have a site plan exemption application or the zoning officer issuance of a temporary permit for trailers.
The way I understand from the board, they would grant a site plan exemption, but they want more information.
They want more information.
Satisfy Mr. Vog's letter.
Okay, so.
And I can't tell you what that is until I hear more of this application.
I believe there were revised plans that were attempted to be submitted, but it was less than ten days before the meeting. So, I didn't want to touch them with a ten-foot pole. I said, take these back, even submit the message.
So, but I, I don't think we should listen until Terry reviews those, those plans.
They reviewed those. Give them a chance to come back. We'll, we'll review it if they can.
Let me ask, let me ask you, Mr. Sherrill, again, with your revised plans that you gave into detention, do you feel comfortable that you addressed all those issues and there are no outstanding issues?
We've addressed all the issues that are, that are set forth in Mr. Vog's.
You have some more information that you would like to submit to detention?
And, and again, if, in between now and the next meeting, if there's any additional information, we would more than provide.
What was in the revised plans that Terry said?
We revised, we received the revised letter as a result of the revised plan. So, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. It was a circulation.
At least I did this revised plan that you.
Didn't you try to submit me something just recently, like last week? You tried to send me something.
Question for the engineer, Glenn, do you have?
Are they?
Oh, that is a circulation plan.
Mr. Herschel, I, I think you need to resolve this threshold issue and set a new date and then Mr. Vog can tell them what they need to submit. If you say that they, this can proceed as a site plan exemption.
One, one sec.
No, it's a threshold issue. It's a jurisdiction question.
One, one, one thing I'd definitely need is circulation. I know you have it here.
We have it here, we can submit that. I think that was part of the.
That's what was attempted to be submitted last week. It was not revised plans. We have not seen revised plans since this letter. What was attempted to be submitted last week was a standalone circulation plan.
But I, I need Terry to review and mention.
Hey, I think you have something to help Terry out, please. There's a great deal, Glenn, what, what your group did on the recent Bruce daycare center. You, you did a masterful application rider that went into how the site functions. Do that again.
We compliment you from the dais, how nice it was.
Mr. Herschel, one of the criteria for the daycare is that there has to be sufficient parking based upon the number of students. That's a wide gulf between what's required for a school, which is one question. So, so I think you're gonna have, at some point during the hearing, you're going to have to address that as well, whether this is a daycare or whether it's a school.
If it's a daycare, just you should know, there are state regulations, how many students, the ratio per teacher.
I think that's a factual question.
This is not a daycare.
Well, that's what Mr. Sherrill says.
It has, it has.
Hold on a second. Hold on, that's going to be a factual issue at the end of the case.
No, it's exempt.
But right now, I think.
That's a zone issue, wasn't it?
No.
Mr. Sherrill, I think, at the end, you hear evidence that this is a daycare. You, I think you might have to decide that at the end. I don't know. We'll see what the, what the evidence shows. But right now, I think you can, I'm hearing a consensus that you're satisfied that this is a site plan exemption made. Can you just vote on that?
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to, but I think. Can you verify with the state that they agree that this paper that says daycare and it could also be for use?
We could, I could look into that. I could ask Mr. Sherrill and Mr. Herschel to address.
I'm thinking about it.
If that paper is the same for preschool.
Yeah, Mr. Sherrill, you indicated, you indicated that this is a daycare, not a daycare.
I think that everybody talking at once, please. I'm sorry.
Hold on, please submit something in writing, both attorneys, why you think it's not a daycare, and Mr. Herschel, why you think it is a daycare. And I, you know, my, my guess is that the state regulations are broader than Lakewood's land use regulations.
If I could just recite something in NJS 35.
We, we, we don't, we don't need to resolve that now.
We'll do it next year.
We'll do it next week. So, but I, I keep asking this question. Are you satisfied that this is a site plan exemption?
I, I think I did clear. I, the board wanted more information, but basically just to continue, if we're requiring them to make a site plan, we cannot, we, we can't afford a site plan. If we say that we need a exemption and they would just want more information, that's the case.
We're tabled this for tonight, right?
Can we pass it pending the further information?
Was it, was it what? We're tabled this.
Mike, 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 Mike.
Is it that difficult to get a site plan?
That's, that's.
That's a good idea. Why can't we do site?
If it were converted to a site plan, there's, yes, different fees, additional fees, additional plans that are required. They'd need waivers for things like traffic study. Uh, it would take more time and more money and it, yes, it would be delay.
I, I also don't know how you can grant the variance under a site plan exemption. I thought that was a, a disqualifier for a site. I think under the MLWL, when you need a variance, you, that, that's, it's a variance application, which is a site plan application.
In April, we shouldn't.
It's another issue. Whether it's six inches or sixteen feet, it's still a variance.
Which has been advertised for, but.
Mr. Sable doesn't feel we should take a vote, we should hear more information, but we may come back another meeting and then decide after they assign the plan. Right, and then wasting about time.
Is it in the inside? So, can we pass it pending the fact that if it is approved as a preschool, that we give the approval tonight? Assuming that what the certificate is, as he says, it says preschool, but it's.
Is beyond, is beyond the certificate, it's not you interpreting.
One way or another.
Preschool comes under the definition of child.
What document did they give? What's, did they give a document that says preschool on it as opposed to daycare?
No, they haven't.
Different document, I'm asking.
No different documents.
So, it's the same, so he has the document.
That's absolutely not.
All of this is off the record.
Not actually.
Okay.
Loop for adjourned.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion. Are we granting a site plan exemption or not?
No, considering.
Considering it as a site plan exemption.
Okay.
I'm at a motion, which is considered as a site plan exemption.
Second, you need any more information or?
As far as the site plan, I mean, I want to hear the status of operations and all that, just what they said they submitted, but I'm okay with the site plan, did I say?
All right, there's a motion, there's a second on that.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. So, we have to vote. The vote is whether they may proceed as a site plan exemption.
But I, but I did hear saying, but do everything you would have done had you done a site plan. Did I hear that?
They would require additional information.
Okay, I'll sit with the standards of a site plan, so you don't have to start over again.
Consistent with your preschool, uh, paper.
I'm, I'm not just saying, Mr. Sherrill, if you go ahead without a site plan, with a site plan exemption and you don't submit all the information that, that Terry needs, you may deny it the next.
There's no, no problem. We, we're prepared to go through each and every.
But you understand, even though we're making a motion to grant the exemption, we still want you, without a whole site plan.
No, we, we have said, two words.
All through.
And we're very, very comfortable with Mr. Vog's letter. We'll address each and every item.
And before, then.
Yes, sir.
I think he wants it.
Well, some of the items, well, for testimony, so I, we could supply, uh, you know, written answers to those questions if we had time. So, Mr. Vog has the opportunity to take a look at testimony.
That's what we're asking for, Chairman. We're asking for a detailed application rider which addresses it. And when we issue our next letter, we can actually incorporate the information so everybody has it.
I think it incorporates whatever Terry just said.
And I think, Mr. Glenn, uh, Glenn Lyons understands what we want.
Isn't that all of that now? No, it's there. And what would be different in your question?
Here's the difference. The difference is every time I send one of these letters, I have comment one, tell us what you're doing. We don't find out until three seconds ago. And then I'm asked to say, geez, does that work? I have no idea. If I know what, how the site's intended to operate, I can at least get my data scale. I'm asking about whether students are, are going to be drawn into the school.
Mr. Vog, what I often see from an, Mr. Vog, what I often see from engineers in response to a question like that, they write a detailed letter that.
Yes, it's an application rider. It's a standard in the industry.
So, Mr. Lyons, can you, can you provide that, a letter with the detail of operations?
Yes.
Chuck, can we pass it pending Terry's approval?
We haven't opened it. We haven't actually.
Okay, so, so the, the motion on the table is to grant the exemption provided that.
To, to let them proceed under an application for site plan exemption.
Providing that they give more information.
My recommendations, Chairman. My recommendations, Chairman, if you want to proceed with a site plan exemption, that's certainly your choice. With the understanding that getting further into this, depending upon what we hear, we may be asking for additional information for a future.
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of questions. Looking at this layout, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, I feel the same way. I don't.
I want to end the testimony, but I see a layer.
Yes, I want to hear testimony from the public that says, what are the concerns here? What are your sees?
That's fine, sir. So, you want to say a big statement?
Okay, is the motion, is that? Okay, is the motion on, it's with giving more information. That was the motion. Okay, where's?
Now, this motion, just so I can rephrase it, is to proceed the, oh, the applicant.
Mike, Mike, can't hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. But the applicant may proceed with their application under the site plan exemption criteria, but that they will be required to provide additional information for Mr. Vog's letter.
Copious.
Additional information.
I, I don't, I don't know what that word means.
That's what they turn a lie.
Mr. Vog's letter asks for the things the board wants to see.
I don't know. We're gonna see, uh.
We have to hear that application. Basically, first, they have an operation, how many statements, what circulation, what the part.
How many parents, what time are they dropping off? Is it?
As if it was a normal site plan application.
As you gotta stop talking at the same time.
It's so much fun.
So, basically, you will have a site plan without calling it a site plan.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what we do.
So.
I'll, I'll, second, just want to make a motion.
Yeah, make a motion.
Every second.
Do a second.
You do.
Every second.
That's late, that's late.
Mr. Sherrill.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
No.
Mr. Klein, down left, Mr. Herschel.
Yes, with more information.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed, say.
Yes. Okay, now, Mr. Herschel, with your permission, Mr. Vog or myself will provide Mr. Lyons with Mr. Lyons's letter on the daycare center. So that.
I have.
Oh, you know, you have. So, you know the format. I, I think that is something that the board has accepted in the past. Number of students, number of staff, hours, ages, grades, circulation.
Circulation patterns, whether there'll be buses, whether there'll be vans, whether people will go outside and manage, where people get picked up and dropped off. You know what to do.
Okay. We did that on the last, once on that other application.
Ally, when, when is continuing this application?
From March seventeenth is full. March thirty-first has five big applications on it, so.
It shouldn't take so long.
They need to open it public. We need, we haven't heard any of the testimony on the application.
It's, it's gonna take long, but you have a post-mittering. So, what do you recommend?
Uh, I don't even know what my April date is. I mean, we need time for them to prepare the plans you're asking. We need time for Terry to review them. I don't know, picking a date out of thin air is the best idea.
In the meantime, is there TCO for Bella?
I have no idea. That's not.
Okay, or one, one thing.
Our notice is carried through at day seven.
One thing I would recommend, that, uh, we're giving them the, uh, we'll let them have the temporary trailers until they come back to the board.
I don't think the board has the authority to affect these.
Okay.
There's only one person that does on this.
Uh, she, she told, she told me that she would extend it if she needed. She has extended it already?
Yeah, we need to on April twenty-first. I don't know what the schedule's gonna look like as we get closer to that or if that gives them time to get revised plans.
How long would you do, how long do you need to get all your revised plans in? Mr. Lyons? When could you have whatever tabonages?
We can have it for him within two weeks, easily, maybe months.
Okay, what is circulation plan showing with it?
We already have the circulation plan.
I need Terry to review that.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I don't know. We're deciding.
Yeah. Um, you wanna just move it to May?
The only April meeting is April twenty-first or April last.
Ally, when are you holding, April twenty-first, staff?
Too far, Ken. I don't have any schedule for that, Ken. But we have, you know, dozens of applications rolling and all things.
Okay. There's only one meeting in April, April twenty-first.
April twenty-first?
Okay, Ally, when, uh, when does he have to submit? Well, what time? All the additional information?
However, we don't know what he's going to submit, so Terry can't guess as to how long it's going to take to review it.
You're gonna submit in two weeks approximately.
Yeah.
March twenty, he will submit.
I'll give you a month. That's, that's enough for you. I'll give you a month, that's, that's enough for you.
Yes.
All right, I don't have the, you know, make the announcement.
Hold on, we have, we have an issue. His traffic engineer is not available, the 21st.
What's the first meeting in May?
The 5th, I think you told me, Ally.
I did.
The 50th?
As long as his wife doesn't deliver one of them. Are you April 21st, or?
They're still talking about it.
Okay.
People aren't quite applying traffic, it's where his problem. So we have, there's another day after that.
If we, if we get to it.
May 5th.
Okay, hold on.